Okay, if I could go ahead and call the meeting to order at 9:01 a.m. Anyone that's in the audience, in consideration of others, please silence your phone and refrain from speaking unless recognized. Let the record show that all five council members are here. And if we could, at this time, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Hands over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Okay, with that, I will, I guess I need to say why we're meeting here. Today is a special economic development workshop for the City Council of the City of Glendora. It's a special meeting. And it is Tuesday, September 5th, 9:00 a.m. We're getting started. And I will go ahead and open public comment. Do we have anybody to speak on public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment. And then we will open our item to conduct an Economic Development Strategic Assessment Workshop.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a request from former Mayor Cliff Hamlow to lend his support for Objective Number Nine, the annexation of...
Okay, we will make sure that gets into the record.
Thank you.
And then I understand Valerie, you're going to be leading us on today.
Good morning. Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor, and good morning, Council. Good morning, everyone. As you mentioned, we are here today to conduct the Economic Development Workshop. I'm going to give a short presentation, but before I do so, I'm going to turn it over to our City Manager, Adam Raymond, to go ahead and say a couple of brief opening remarks.
Perfect. Thank you. Just a reminder for everyone, a couple of housekeeping items. It's being recorded this morning. The microphones are on, so if you could please hit the microphone and speak into it when you are. That way, the valuable information can be shared with the public and those who couldn't make it today. Quick appreciation of Valerie and Alicia. We're here yesterday on Labor Day, making sure everything was set up and ready to rock and roll. They've been spending a lot of time ensuring that we have a great panel for you this afternoon, or this morning, excuse me, and that the information is going to help out with our strategic plan. So, our expectations today, the City Council's actively engaged in conversation as we go about the presentations. Again, with the panel that'll be here giving their own presentations, you'll get a 30,000-foot level of economic development in the state of California. You'll get a more localized look in Glendora and our local region, and also talk a little bit about the commercial side as well. As we sat in the same room about a year ago and talked about our strategic plan, the number-one overall goal that came up with the council through your individual feedback was economic development. And so, I believe the mayor talked to the state of the city that economic development's going to be at the forefront of a lot of people's minds. At the Mayor Pro Tem's request, there's a copy of the community survey before you as well, just as a reminder of how the public was looking, wanting things to do. Our goal today is have an open and honest conversation of what economic development is. What we're looking for from all of you is direction in terms of larger policy items that we'll bring back later. A lot of items are going on now via planning and land use and a lot of those related items around the future of the A-line, or L-line, or Gold Line, for those watching. It's now the A-line. And first mile, last mile projects, as well as the development of Glendora Avenue and some of our larger commercial areas along Route 66 and our highway. So, very thankful for all the work on staff, and we look forward to your active engagement and involvement today. And with that, Valerie, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Okay, so as Adam mentioned, you weren't wrong in saying in the afternoon as well, we have a pretty full schedule aligned for today. We have the schedule in front of you. We will try to go ahead and keep you on track. We have presentations, and we have two of our speakers here today, and I'll introduce those. We have Gerbaks Sahoda. She is the President and CEO of CAL-ED. That is the California Association for Local Economic Development. So she is here to share her expertise at a higher level of what's going on, best practices and what people are doing. And a warm welcome to Gerbaks, and thank you. She did fly in from Sacramento this morning to be here with us after the Labor Day weekend, so thank you for that. And then we have Eric Deichart, also a professional in economic development, who has been an economic development professional for more than 30 years, I believe, most recently serving as the manager for the City of Pasadena. So he'll be here to share with us as well on a more regional and local level. So we will go ahead, and after the presentations this morning, we will break for that panel discussion. As we go through the presentations this morning, you might have specific questions for Gerbaks or Eric with regard to any clarifications. Please feel free to ask them. But if you have any questions that might engage some discussion, we're going to ask that you maybe just take a note. You have notepads and pens in front of you, and save those questions for the panel this afternoon after lunch. We'll have Eric and Gerbaks on that panel, as well as Brad, who is a real estate broker with also more than 30 years' experience specializing in retail. He'll be joining us for that discussion. So if we can save meaningful, longer questions for the afternoon, so we could get those perspectives from the three of them. But with that, I will go ahead and just kind of touch a little bit on the strategic plan. As Adam mentioned, the seven goals, one of those was the desire to implement strategic economic development. So that is what we're going to be addressing today. Aside from that goal, and there were nine objectives under implementing strategic economic development. Today, we are going to hit the updating the Economic Development Action Plan. We have not updated that since 2017, so it's long overdue for us to update that. So I'm appreciative of the opportunity to get council's input on that today. So in addition to this objective, we have seven tasks that are associated with that objective. And so we're going to probably touch on all of these a little bit, but primarily, we're going to be able to address hosting the workshop, which is what we're doing right now, and then get council's input on what kind of incentive packages we might be able to offer moving forward and include in our action plan, and whether or not those incentives would be directed towards any specific type of business or industry. And then we're also going to identify or talk a little bit more about economic leakage opportunities and what those look like for our city specifically. So next, I'm just going to kind of talk a little bit about the activity in the city. I think there's a perception, because we're a built-out community primarily, and we have a few handful of vacant sites that might be very obvious, there's the perception that we don't have a lot going on in the city. But the fact is, there's a lot going on that I wanted just to kind of make sure that you are all aware of, so that we can celebrate the successes that we do have. We met with our planning manager last week and just kind of took a look at the activity that's happening all around the city. And so I went ahead and put a little star by all of the places in the city that have something going on, whether just completed or in the process within the pipeline. So you can see that pretty much throughout all of the commercial corridors in the city, there's some activity. I'll just touch on that a little bit. Over in the Village, just to the north of us, we have Andrews, who after 50-some years has retired and recently sold their building. We have a real estate office going in there. There will be a new hat bar, which is the first in the county, if not California, that will be opening up. So you'll have the opportunity to create your own hats. It's something different and new. Cocovino, while they have been operating, they have been working on the ability to actually serve alcohol, and they recently got approval from the county. So we have their plans for their restrooms, so that they can go ahead and start serving. We have Ramones coming in, taking the spot of Dominico's. Drink Your Greens was closed, and they reopened. And then we have Revved Up Coffee, that'll be going up on the north end of the street. This will be their second location, their first being in Claremont. And again, the obvious, we've got the Coldwell Banker Building that remains vacant, as well as the Village Kitchen Shop. And staff has been in communication with those two periodically as well, to see what we can do about it. Just moving along the west side of the city, just south of us, by the post office at 223 South Glendora Avenue, there's a new financial office that will be going in there, and they have redesigned the facade of that building. See the investment there? And then we've got a couple of medical buildings. Over 630 West Foothill Boulevard, there's a proposed new two-story medical building, and that is a business that currently is operating in the city, and they're expanding. And so they'll be building their own medical building to move into. And then there is a three-story medical building proposed for 210 South Grand, between the hospital and the medical building on Carroll. And then the car wash over at the old Palms Restaurant at 1717 South Grand. There's a lot going on on Route 66. We had the Wendy's recently opened up over at the Patrillo's Shopping Center. The Glendora Community Hospital, which is existing, they have been operating at a very small level in terms of what they have available to them. So they will be changing the use of that facility, not the use, but the type of care they're offering, and we expect that that will be 100% utilized in the near future. 745 East Route 66, that's the old Andy's Auto Property. That property is under new, it's a redevelopment opportunity. That staff has been meeting with brokers and that property owner on that property. You've got the barbecue station that is working on their improvements where the old Sergio's was, the Easter Seals where the old Golden Spur was. They had been quite quiet for some time, but they are working on that project again. 1861 East Route 66, that's the formerly Flag Station, the Eye Store at Lone Hill and Route 66, which is now working towards the two-story medical building. And again, that one also is a existing business that's relocating and expanding into their own building. Over on Financial Way, Oasis, which was located on Vermont, has merged their location in San Dimas to the larger office over on Financial Way, which was previously occupied by the National Hot Rod Association. And then the property at Amelia and Route 66, the former RDA property. We have received plans, and they're working on their improvements for that property as well, for that site. Then along Lone Hill, Marketplace Diamond Ridge, we have the new Cube Smart Storage that opened up just south of the 210 freeway. Walmart is working on expanding. They'll be enclosing their garden area to make way for online pickups. The Hyundai dealership is remodeling their facade, and they are expecting to be done next month in October. You have the Fast Five Car Wash underway across the street from the marketplace. Victoria's Secret is going into the Diamond Ridge Center, and we received plans for a Bob's Furniture for the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond. Then along Arrow Highway, you'll see that primarily with the updates in the Arrow Highway specific plan, we have quite a few residential projects coming through. There's about 100 new units that will be along Arrow Highway, and of course, we have the Glendora Public Market as well. So I just wanted to touch base, kind of just give you an idea of the activity that is going around town. There are things happening, and of course, we have much more that we can do, and that's why we're here today. But with that, I'm going to turn it over to Gerbaks, who will go ahead and give you her presentation.
Oh, cool. All right. Thank you. All right, well, good morning, everybody. Good morning. So I'll just tell you right now, I'm loud, and I'm very excited about economic development, so be prepared. And first of all, thank you to your team. They did a great job preparing us and making sure that we had great information, so that we're bringing you relevant information from our side as well. And to talk to you really briefly and broadly about economic development, but hopefully get into the weeds of things that really interest you. So, a little bit about CAL-ED, if you're not familiar with us. And I feel weird that I'm ignoring you guys, but I know you're there. Okay, cool. We're the State Association for Economic Development. We've been around since 1980, and we have over 800 members. Most of those are cities and counties. So in California, we represent nearly 300 jurisdictions. We're the largest economic development organization in the state and one of the largest in the country. And what that means is, when I'm here speaking to you today, it's not just from a perspective of, "I love economic development, too." It really is from a perspective of, we see the federal policy side, the state policy side, especially as we're advocating for jurisdictions, so that you do have more tools and resources to do economic development. But then we also have the benefit of seeing what happens in the communities. And it's always exciting to see what the local leadership is passionate about, and then seeing how it turns into reality as the staff implement it. So, really broad perspective, so there's going to be a few things that we'll go into the weeds on, but I'm going to try to keep it high-level, as you have some really good local experts that are going to talk to you about the local market. So that's a little bit about us. These are the items I'm hoping to hit in about the next hour. So I will talk quickly. You can stop me and interrupt me, it does not bother me. And we're going to talk about defining economic development, because I do think it's important that we're using the same language. And I'll talk to you about the environment as well. Both those tie together. Your role as leaders in economic development, the types of economic development we're seeing across the state, and where to begin. And then measuring success, which is probably the biggest piece as it relates to what's happening in the economic development environment, that's been an issue for us long-term. It's not just being able to clearly articulate what it is we're trying to accomplish with economic development strategies locally, but what does success look like when we've actually reached the goals that we want to see? So you'll hear me talk a lot about that. I'm glad to see it's on the agenda later, where you guys will be talking about it from the city perspective. So before I get to that, I want to make sure you all know that I've been with CAL-ED 20 years, more than 10 of those as the CEO. And I always feel this weird need to share it. It's not because I can't get another job. It's because I'm really excited about the work that you guys do, because you're the closest level of government to the people of the state, and it makes a difference in terms of creating economic opportunity, changing people's lives, and changing their futures. So I'm really passionate about this topic, and I'm excited to be here, because I know you guys are, too. Your staff told me how important economic development is to you, that you just brought on a new team member as well, or you're bringing on a new team member to support your efforts. It would be really helpful, with your permission, if you guys don't mind telling me a little bit individually about what your economic development priority is, so that as I'm going through my presentation, I can make sure I'm responding to the things that you all care about. So, Mr. Mayor, however you'd like to do that.
Okay, I will call, I'll go ahead and go first, and then we can go from there. But, you know, for me, one of the things that I think is really important is for a community to have a balanced population. So we see communities that are considered bedroom communities, that they don't have a whole lot of industry or retail or business in them. And then we see other communities that are all business with very little residential. Glendora's always been that balance, but we have lost that in the last 20 years or so. We have very, very little industry left. I don't know if we have any manufacturing left at all. And we're watching our commercial areas shrinking on a regular basis. A lot of that has to do with decisions that are being made in Sacramento. So it is important to increase our housing inventory, but not at the cost of making sure that we have a healthy economy locally. So these are the things that I personally am struggling with. And then the other thing is understanding how to communicate this with the residents, because change is difficult for people, and making sure that residents understand the process moving forward, because anytime they hear of any change, there's a guard that goes up immediately. But those are some of my thoughts, and Mendel, if you want to add yours?
You know, I would echo what our mayor has just said. I'm a former banker, so cash is king. I don't like to tax, so I don't like any cash. Better approach, I think, onto the mandates that are what we are, as our mayor said. I also know that people like to shop here and eat here, and... Aces starting to shrink. Hard to buy in here. Something to attract younger folks that... Schools to continue to grow, and element that I believe a lot of people moved here I'm not here, and the schools are here. Very lucky to have a Measure E, where we took back the, some of the sales tax that the county was going to acquire. That has given us a cushion that we don't have, and we've been able to maximize that. At some point in time, we're going to need more of that in order to respond to, again, a lot of the mandates that the state... So I am looking and hoping that a balance can, in an economy that is certainly in...
Good morning. I think balance, but looking at it a little bit differently, balance in the sense of having an opportunity for everyone to live in Glendora, so have a diversity of housing, diversity of services. I appreciate having opportunities for residents to be able to walk to the grocery store, walk to someplace to eat, so making sure that there's balance in the community of where those services are provided. And I've been on the council for 18 years now, so I've lived through some of the ups and downs, and also been part of the council that took risks to do some of that, "Oh, high-density housing." So I am open and excited about the different possibilities and opportunities that exist, and realize that in order to have daytime traffic to attract those businesses that we want, we also have to compromise sometimes on the housing. So looking at the possibilities of how we could do that mix and make things happen. So, thanks.
Aaron, Michael?
Gary. So I agree with a lot of what was said with the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem about what has happened. And we have some blighted areas in town. We have Route 66 and Arrow Highway, which has been blighted for quite some time. We have the Route 66 Pacific Plan that had gone in originally. We really didn't get much push as far as economic development with that. Then there were some changes that were made to that, and that reduced some of the density requirements. And a question about that, if that really affected us or not. A lot of the issues that we're dealing with are from the state level as well. You have a lot of businesses that have moved out of the state because of policy the state has been pushing, which is challenging for us. You know, obviously, more housing, and we're not a well-balanced city. We've lost most of our industry, so we don't have that daytime traffic to support restaurants and things of that nature, which is a big problem. And then we have the push for housing, as was mentioned earlier, that they want housing, housing, but where are people going to work? So they're pushing an unbalanced situation, which is very challenging, as well as the economic environment and social environment from the state of California, which is driving out folks. We have a lot of people who have left the city for other states. Challenging. Was one proponent that I was, for day one, since I've been on council, that I was trying to push, very excited about, if we could have, we have two colleges in town. We have APU, and we have Citrus College. And it would've been nice to have incubators to pull from those folks, to develop that business that we have, that will have that daytime traffic, and then have those move-up businesses into... But then again, we are built out, but there's redevelopment opportunities. We've lost that redevelopment money from the state of California, which creates other issues. However, even with that redevelopment money that we have, then you have the Surplus Land Act that basically takes money away. It's a taking from the residents. So it's like, why would you do that? Because they put penalties in place to do so. So we have a whole mixed bag of things. Then you have the residents that don't want the high density, because they like the city the way it is, and they don't want the traffic. And that also creates an issue with infrastructure and the cost that goes along with that as well. We have a whole mixed bag of issues that we have to deal with, whether it's the state mandating unfunded mandates and pushing us with threats to make things happen. Then we have the residents that don't want certain changes. So it puts us, as the council, in a little bit strange situation here of being representative of the public, of the residents that we represent, and then the state that forces us to do certain things. We have to get creative in how we go forward with that. There are opportunities, as I mentioned, because we do have some areas that could be redeveloped. How we do that is going to be critical, densities and things of that nature, but have it conformed to what the residents are going to be... And we're representatives of them, and we need to...
Thanks, Michael. David?
Thank you. Thank you, Gerbaks, for sharing your day with us. Mine are kind of simple. We're going to hear from the experts that tell us that time and distance is critical, and density is critical, and rooftops drive some of the other solutions. And accepting that, I think we need to be cautious of some of the change, and at least make sure that it still fits the Glendora culture or character, and doesn't dramatically change that to the point where residents are struggling with looking at the change. We've seen some of that in the past. Also, the word is rooftops bring business. Okay, so roofs and doors, but I want that business to be something unique, a destination-type business, that creates some desire to come here, as opposed to, I call it, and I've expanded my distance a little bit, I want to avoid the three-to-seven-mile repeat. Drive down Route 66, which becomes Huntington Drive, going into Pasadena, and see the same stuff every three to seven miles. Just be different. Not sure what that is. I don't know, you know, a free gold mine or something. But, you know, we don't need to have the same repeats, and, you know, the newer generations need to get some steps in and be willing to walk a little bit. They're not, they like the easy button. And speaking of easy button, I hope that we will be cautious about not accepting projects because only of sales tax, but rather that quality, unique, sustainable item. Just a fast-drive-through solution.
Thank you, David. Since you asked...
Yes.
I think it's important that maybe we hear from a few other people as well. I don't want to discount anybody, but other people that are in the room, the staff that actually live in the city of Glendora, I think it'd be important to hear your perspectives as well. So if we could, I'll start with Adam.
I'll remind you that Eric also lives here. So we could pick on Eric as well. So I think is the only one with children in local schools here in the area. I mean, I think, I grew up, oh, Joe's here, too. Sorry. This weekend, we just had this conversation about this weekend. So I think I've had the ability to live in several different places and travel quite a bit, and I think one of the biggest challenges facing people is change. I have the belief that off... I have the belief that oftentimes when community members and residents say they don't want change. It's the quality of life that they don't want changed. It's not that they are fearful of additional density. It's that they're fearful that that takes away the charm of a community or the safety. I think in today's world, one of the biggest challenges is that social media has turned into fact instead of just people's musings and comments. And it really has changed the way that cities can communicate some of those changes that we have. I would love to see additional places for dining and entertainment. I think places where grandparents can hang out with their children and grandchildren, I think. You know, some of you on that side have grandchildren that live in town, some older than others, but having those gathering spots. Regardless of what it is are important. It's kind of what we tried to do in the village in some extents. I don't mind. Three and four and five story buildings, so long as they're done well, but at the same time, understand why if you had a single family resident that abuts that development, that may not be the best. You know, thing for you. I think really what we've lost the ability to do when we talk about development is have difficult conversations when people try to be respectful and it's. I think living here, people not afraid to walk up to your house, which is great and ask you questions. It's also really, you know, they're very insistent that they read something online and it must be the truth. So, you know, I think on, it's been said a couple of times is how we communicate the changes and why we're doing them is very important. I would love to see some intensification around where the future A-line station is going to be, not necessarily just housing, but also some, a commercial in the general vicinity as well for people to visit. I think we all look at Glendora Avenue coming south all the way to the station is the future extension of the downtown, and I think that's a wonderful opportunity that, that we don't want to miss. So I think, as was said a lot, there's been a lot of requirements of the state of California as relates to housing. We also have federal court cases that impact homelessness and sometimes those get conflicted and confused and people. I think we have to be careful. People are like, well, those people are going to move into town. And it's like, well, who are those people? You know, sometimes the apartment rent we have is four times as much as someone's paying on their mortgage. So I think we really need to be cognizant of the type of business that we want, is that healthcare, is that, you know, we have an aging population, having a bunch of doctors in town and nurses in town isn't the end of the world, you know, in those areas. But really, for me, is living in a city that has a thoughtful process for why they're doing what they're doing. It's okay to have missteps along the way. It's okay to, the businesses don't, don't work out, but having a thoughtful methodology that we can explain and succinct play. In succinct opportunities is what's really important for me. Thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Adam. Jeff, can you take off your planning hat for a minute and put on your resident hat?
All right. So, you know, I grew up in the area. I've spent my whole life in this part of the San Gabriel Valley, most of growing up and going to school in Covina. Been living in Glendora for 20 years. My kids went through the school system. I think what amazes me, or when I think about the San Gabriel Valley as my home and its, and its history. I think it's, it's, you know, it's amazing how fast this, this area was built. You know, less than 100 years ago, there was nothing going on here, but a little bit of agriculture. And then largely because of really post-World War II, a lot of defense spending, coming to this area of Southern California. People needing jobs and housing, you know, government spending on defense contracts basically created this whole region in an extremely fast period. From 1950 to 70, you saw Glendora go from about 4,000 residents to over 30,000 residents. And that happened, you know, all over our, our region. And so the reason for these communities to be here and how they developed was providing housing for people who needed it. Building it at an extremely fast pace. Got a lot of strip commercial. That's why you see all of the repeat of everything in all of these cities around here because it's all, you know, you can't walk anywhere really. It's all based around the car, based around the premise that people are going to live here. We're going to drive on a freeway to Los Angeles or Pasadena, you know, now Orange County or somewhere. But now I think, you know, given the maturity of all of the San Gabriel Valley cities, including Glendora. You know, and the reason that we originally became and grew to exist in the last 50, 60 years or 70 years. Has, has really gone away, you know, at, when the Cold War ended, all the defense spending went out of the area. And so really for the past 30 years, all of these communities have been growing older, growing more stale, the housing. Now our housing stock that people moved into 60, 70 years ago is now 60, 70, 80-year-old housing. The cost of housing, now we're dealing with a whole variety of different problems. You know, my kids will probably never be able to buy a house in Glendora, much less anywhere in the San Gabriel Valley. Because if you look around, you can't hardly buy a house for less than, you know, a million dollars, a traditional, single-family house. We've got condominiums going up that are brand new, selling for $850,000. Most jobs that people and incomes that, that people have will not support that. So there is a, there is a crisis, you know, maybe population trends. If California continues to decline in population, maybe those problems will go away in 10 to 20 years. In the meantime, I think Glendora as a community continues, the population continues to age. We continue to get older. I think that, you know, we're, the community and people in general are fear moving forward and addressing. You know, the big issues that we have in the community. Fortunately, Glendora is, I think we're very lucky that, you know, we have, we have low crime, we have great schools. We're located in a great place. We're blessed with great geography and we should try to take advantage of that. The intersection of, of, at this part of the LA County, our relationships with Orange County and other areas within the region. Are taking advantage of the location, the intersection of the 210 and 57 freeways, the coming of the gold line. But I think we need to, as a community, decide, you know, where we want to do, what, how we want to address these problems and these advantages that we have given our location. So I don't know. That's my, those are my thoughts.
Appreciate it, Jeff. Thanks. Alicia and Val, I don't think either one of you live here? Okay, not yet. We'll, we'll get you here and we're going to get Moises up here as well. But Joe, I know you are now a Glendora resident again, born and raised here, but moved away for a little bit, but.
Yes, I've been doing it all weekend. Even though I've been living up, up at the Chamber office the last 12, like 12, 12 years, but I'm the president, CEO of the Glendora Chamber of Commerce and. I was basically going to say what Adam said, kind of just, you know, that plus. Really just, I mean, we, I think a lot of edu, more education needs to be done with the community. Because, you know, people want to keep Glendora, Glendora, no business, just houses, stuff like that, but then pay no taxes. But then they don't want, but then you don't want, but then your businesses in, you know, so. But it's so that and it's just, we need to continue and catch up with the world. So I think maybe in some of the stuff, we're a little, a little bit behind. I mean, even our, our, our schools, we're behind. You know, let's, let's be honest. Some of that isn't because of housing, it's just offerings. And it's just, I mean, Glendora's a wonderful place. I moved back here. My son goes to Glendora High School, which I went to Glendora High School many moons ago. Just not as many as you think. And, and, but just, you know, we need to have those tough conversations. You know, it is tough because growing pains, growing is painful. With the A-line coming in, you know, it's not just transportation for homeless people. It's going to be people, you know, because that's another education they would keep trying to get. It's going to bring people in, it's going to let people go to where, where they have to go and development has to be, be made and really make it worthwhile, you know, so. And I know I'm rambling a bit, but the Chamber wants to be part of that. I'd like to be in, know more about what's going on because people keep asking me. You know, coming in, 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 in the office and, you know, have a business card to Valerie all the time, you know, so. But, but yeah, so. I want to, I want to be part of that team to help this stuff grow.
Thanks, Joe. And then Eric, if you can take off your professional hat and put on your resident hat as well.
I'll, thank you very much. I appreciate that. So yes, I am very local. I was born here and raised both of my boys in, in Glendora. From preschool all the way to Glendora High graduates, so. But yeah, just like Jeff said, it, they are successful college graduates, living in other places and. Having them even consider moving to our city again would be a, you know, it's a difficult mountain to climb, so. I'm, I think I'll withhold some of my more specific comments on economic development and I'll, I'll be clear in my presentation on a couple of items, but. But I do very much care for this community. I think there are some opportunities and some realities we just have to kind of contend with. Because I think many people are, are close to the same page, but just having, how to explain things is, is a big, important kind of aspect to this. And hopefully I can add something to that discussion. So I'll hold off on some specifics, but I appreciate the opportunity.
Appreciate it, Eric. Thanks. So, Gurbak, that's everything. Can you just put all that in the mixer and give us some answers?
In like one minute.
Okay.
No, so thank you and thanks for taking the time to, to share your input as well. Because I think part of economic development, a big part of economic development is to have this safe space where you can have these really candid conversations about what people want out of economic development, what they want to see in their community. And then understanding that you can't be everything to everyone. And so I'm, I don't want to make it sound like Glendora is not unique. But I will say, these are the topics that have come up here are really similar to what I hear when I'm talking to other communities. I would say in the last three weeks, I've spoken to three or four other communities and some of the same themes are coming up, especially now. And I do think some of it's what's happening in the environment in California, so I'll, I'll talk a little bit about that. But I'd like to start off with a, kind of a foundational piece about economic development. So when we talk about economic development, we discuss it as the creation of wealth through which community benefits are created or realized. That's a really broad definition. Economic development is the creation of wealth through which community benefits are realized. So it has component pieces of what you guys talked about, right? You want to make sure that your, your businesses are thriving and the businesses match. They match the opportunities that your residents are looking for. But it's not for the purpose to just get taxed and generate wealth for the community. The purpose is to then reinvest in schools, infrastructure, whatever community services and benefits that your residents are requiring. What's happened as we talk about economic development, and those of you that have been around since redevelopment know this. When we talk about economic development, oftentimes what you saw was look at this blighted area, look at these buildings, and now look how nice the buildings are. We didn't always talk about what was happening inside those buildings, whether it was the people or the businesses. And so one of the, the struggles for economic development, and you guys hit on it really clearly here, is this need to explain really clearly and articulate the connection between what you're doing from an economic development perspective. Why it benefits the community and how it moves the entire community forward. So it's not just a pro-business lobby. It's not just, you know, you're trying to only help certain businesses or create incentives or advantages for new businesses. The end game is to create a really strategic, vibrant, sustainable economy that can provide services and the quality of, of life that your residents want. How to communicate that becomes really difficult in a highly political environment, especially one that we've seen over the last, I would say, five to six years. So. We always use this as our base definition of economic development and then bring it down to tighter definition is what it means locally. So in the environment, you heard me talk about, and you guys actually talked about this as well, just kind of the language around economic development. So it used to be when we spoke about economic development, we would talk about strategically helping businesses thrive. Not necessarily making the connection to how that helped everybody in the community. Whether it was helping people earn their way to the middle class, get into the pipeline, so the educational pipeline, so they could find a better position. Get trained, move on, achieve their goals, stay in the community, allow their children to be in the community that they raised them in. So we didn't always talk about the people's side of economic development. And I'll tell you, if you're watching the state policy piece as it relates to economic development, there's a heavy emphasis on the people's side. Especially if you're following the Community Economic Resilience Fund, the SURF program, which is that strategic planning program that has $600 million from the state for regional economic development. So one, they're going to create these regional strategies and I believe LA County has its own, is considered its own region. So you have a chance to have a voice in that, but part of that is also once those strategies are created. You can look at being part of regional economic development projects and hopefully apply to funds for the state. But all of that planning and discussion is around how do you move people forward, not just how do you move businesses forward. So the language that people are using to talk about economic development has definitely changed at the state level for sure, and we're hearing it at the local level as well. What's interesting, I would say the implementation hasn't changed. And I say that because, and, and you've been around, you said you've been on the council 18 years. You've always been at the local level strategic in how you support your businesses. So even as we talk to new folks about what economic development is, when they say, oh, I want to make sure that we're helping all the entrepreneurs that are trying to create businesses here. We talk about incubators, we talk about new models perhaps for helping people with an idea, get that idea to fruition. But a lot of those tactics and strategies have been around for some time and maybe you need to tweak them to make them work for your community. But there is a disconnect between how people are talking about economic development. And the understanding that economic development's been around for a long time, which is why we do have standards of practice, why we do have people with 15, 20 years of experience doing economic development. So what we talk about with communities and volunteers in particular, is this notion of you need to strategically create your preferred future. That's what economic development is about at the end of the day. It's not about how many businesses can you put in your community. It's not necessarily about what the buildings all look like. It is about what is the quality of life for your community and what does it look like in five years? What it looks, what does it look like in 10 years? This conversation about people being afraid of change, I've heard it from communities with populations as small as 2,000 to like upwards in the hundreds of thousands. And the conversation is, well, I grew up here. I want my children to have the same experience. But if your retail can't maintain that, as you said, you're seeing changes in your commercial and your industry base. If you don't have the opportunity for that future, it might look the same, only a little bit older, but it doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to have the housing and the revenue opportunities to keep your kids in the community. Change isn't always bad and it can happen by still celebrating what's unique about Glendora, what's unique about other cities that have these same challenges. I would say this probably happens more in rural communities than I see it in more urbanized communities. This notion of this is what our city is, we don't want it to change. And it is, to Adam's point, it's about the quality of life. It's not, this is how this block has looked. I want to make sure it always looks this way. It really is, this is my experience growing up here and this is the experience I want to make sure I continue to have. So how you communicate that becomes really important. But the way we talk about it is definitely, it's about strategically creating your preferred future for your community. And getting out of this in the weeds conversation that doesn't necessarily address a bigger strategic point of view. Because that is something that we see when people talk about economic development. They're looking at the fact that they don't have a Trader Joe's in their community right now that they can go to. Or look, I don't have this and I wanted to have it, or look on the corner, this looks like this. So they see very immediate concerns they want addressed. But your challenge, and I would say the staff's challenge, is to talk about that broad, long-term vision of. We are actively addressing what we want our future to look like. We can't just let Glendora shrink up and die because we don't want change. What's that balance? What's that change looks like, look like, and how do we do it with community engagement? So it follows through on the vision of your residents as well. I really like your comment about making sure that you guys are representing your community because they're a critical part of these conversations. So being strategic. Some of you, please. Yeah.
Outside influence of the state makes it harder for that discussion to happen because we're being forced to make a change, particularly because of housing. That will disrupt and unbalance what we already have. Already overbalanced with housing. We don't have the industry. We don't have. That will displace some of that. So now we have to get creative with this outside influence to somehow either retain and/or grow those pieces that are going to be. Addages is, well, we have the more housing, you're going to automatically get the retail and everything else.
So I'm biased in this space and I'm going to put on my advocate's hat for just a moment because Surplus Lands Act is our biggest advocacy issue right now. In fact, we work with Senator Caballero to introduce a sweeping bill that had like, I think it had more than 15 exemptions to the Surplus Lands Act specifically to support economic development. 15 exemptions to the Surplus Lands Act specifically to support economic development. So I hear you. This is probably not the venue to go really deep into that, other than we see the impact that some of that legislation is having on the communities. And there is this general distrust of local government, right? You're not going to build the housing, so we need to watch what you're doing with your land so that we can make sure you're building it irrespective of how it fits into your strategic plan and whether or not you've already gotten approved element from the state. It makes me angry, so I'm going to stop at that. But to say, I do, we get it. We get it. And your team will attest to, they probably get emails from us. We haven't sent one out recently because we've been working through the legislative process. Senator Caballero's bill was gutted quite a bit from housing advocates. And so we've been fighting to get remnants of it back. But we really need jurisdictions to speak up alongside us and say, this isn't acceptable. This is the quality of life we're trying to deliver for our residents. We have a balanced plan, approved element. We need to move forward. So I'm happy to be your advocate in that, and I absolutely understand the impact it's probably having on you all.
I would just add one thing really quick to sort of talk, you heard a lot from the, from the council, and the mayor Pro Tem asked for our community survey. And so one of the things you'll find is, unlike most local agencies where the public doesn't trust them, the public trust here is actually pretty high. So like 90% of people think this is a great place to raise a family. And so I think a lot of the commentary as you go through your presentation, just to kind of provide some context for some of what you just said, is that in addition to that push and feel, I think they feel it more, and I know we do as staff, because there is this history of a very symbiotic relationship between the city council and staff and the public. We have a lot of staff members that are residents, the same thing with our local school districts. And so it's more, and, you know, the mayor asked our opinion as residents, and I've worked in lots of cities, and that's never happened to me before. But because that symbiotic relationship has always existed, and because the public usually thinks we do a really good job, this is really uncharted territory for a lot of people, having to stick, stick their toe back into a development area where traditionally we've had some challenges. So just by way of background, there, there is a flavor of that too, that'll permeate through our discussion today.
helpful. Thank you. I guess I just come from a government distrust place. Although, you know, we advocate for government, so.
Want to put something in perspective for you. Two of us up here got elected based on limited growth, just to give you perspective.
Helpful. I'm going to talk about growth. Not right now. I'll come back to it. I got it. So we're narrowing down that big definition, right? The creation of wealth and through which community benefits are realized. So for those of you that have probably attended a league conference, or maybe you've been part of the minute, I think it's the Finance Advisors, you've probably seen this definition before. From a public perspective, local economic development involves the allocation of limited resources, whether it's land, labor, capital, and entrepreneurship, in a way that has positive effect on the level of business activity, employment, income distribution patterns, and fiscal solvency. So again, I'm taking it from that big, broad definition and trying to bring it as tight to your world as I can. I heard you talk about incentives. I'm going to talk about incentives. But I do think it's important to know that you guys have, and we talk about this, we have nonprofits and also private sector entities within our membership. But being with the association over 20 years, one thing I'll say is, it's really cities and counties, and primarily cities because there are so many more of you, that have invested in economic development. And by invested in economic development, I don't mean just the resources you put into your team, also site assembly, making sure that you are putting your, your revenue to work in a way that's generating more revenue. So it is an important function of local government. So bringing it tighter to your world, economic development is about how you do that, how you take those resources and invest them strategically. You guys have a good community relationship, it sounds like. So I'm not going to go too far into this. One of the reasons I share this slide is because in a lot of communities, not a lot, in some communities, there is this conversation where not everybody's at the table when you're talking about what economic development looks like, what everybody values, what people want to see. It's not necessarily an inclusive conversation. And this is just to show that, you know, there are different parts of your community that need to be at the table. And I'll say, one of the most important roles the elected leaders have are to be the champions of economic development. And it sounds like you guys are already in that space, so. Public sector role. So, part of, I would assume what you see as your role and the staff sees as their role is to maintain and increase and diversify the tax base, economic vitality for commercial industrial areas, maximizing property through highest and best use, creating and retaining jobs, increasing per capita income, creating economic opportunities for residents, and generating revenue to pay for programs and invest in community development. So that's, again, getting tighter to what we see local governments doing in the world of economic development. What you're going to hear in some of these next slides is going to sound repetitious, but it really is the language of economic development that I want you guys to hear, only because oftentimes when people are talking about economic development, it's only business, it's only jobs, it's only retail, or it might just be about specific corridors. But at the end of the, the day, economic development from a local government perspective is about a lot more. So some of the ways that you can help businesses thrive is to create certainty and foster a business-friendly environment to influence business investment location decisions. And here are some of those. The one I'm going to spend some time on here is incentives. I know that you'd already mentioned you don't want to tax people, but this is about, you know, are there sales tax sharing agreements or other things you can do to incentivize businesses? Where are you spending? Are you putting money in into funds to create nice neighborhoods? Investing regulations? Do you have streamlined permitting? Those kinds of things. So that's some of the role that the public sector can really influence to help businesses thrive. Incentives is a really difficult one for economic developers as a profession. I think from the private side, and I don't want to speak for business owners because I'm not a business owner, but I would say there is this expectation, if you're in a community, if there's an incentive program that attracts new businesses, or specifically is for new businesses, what about those that have already made the decision to invest in your community? How do you balance that messaging for them? Also, from the incentive perspective, are you willing to be in a place where you put in clawbacks? So if you say, look, Business A, we want you here. We're willing to give you this incentive, but you need to deliver. And if you don't deliver, we want to make sure that we get a portion, a proportionate share of that investment back, that incentive back. You see that in how the state has structured the Cal Competes Program. It has clawback provisions in that, in there. As a city, that's a really tough space to be in, especially if you're a tight-knit community where you know these businesses and you might understand their individual situation why, maybe they haven't created the hundred jobs they told you they would create. So how are you going to go back to them and say, well, I understand that, but we have this clawback provision in our incentives? It's a tricky game, and it's really important that if you're creating incentives, you're doing it in a way that you're protecting your investment, but also in a way that you're willing to, to go forward and do those clawbacks. And I'll say, we saw during the pandemic, a lot of revolving loan funds that kicked up at the local level and with regional organizations as well. And one of the cautions I'd given our folks that were asking us was, if you're going to create a revolving loan fund, you have to be prepared to take their collateral, which most of them don't want to do, right? I mean, as a, as a former banker, I'm sure that's not a fun thing to do. So incentives is tricky. If you're going to structure something, I would look at the Cal Competes Tax Credit because it is a good one in how they've structured it. But again, it does have clawbacks to protect investments, public investments in these projects. On the other side, I would also say, look at how you can help your supporting businesses. Does it make sense to make one investment in a large company or a larger employer to come here? Or does it make sense to create a program that your already existing businesses can benefit from equally? And hopefully supporting a diverse business base in your community. My two cents on incentives. I can talk more about it if you'd like me to.
I'd like to interject one thing.
Of course.
With the, with the cost of land, with the higher multiples of residential versus housing or manufacturing, you can get a lot more for your land if it's going to be for residential. But then what happens is it prices them out and they don't come here. Then all you're going to do is, it's density tolerance is from the state of California if you do certain things. And then we have also implemented some things as well. So how do you bring back balance when it's unbalanced with the cost of dirt?
I think it depends on what your goal is and what specific piece of land that you're talking about. Because sometimes it is, does this land, does it even make sense to put housing? Or does it really make sense to put an alternative type of use there? So I think that's based on the actual piece of land that you're talking about. And I know that you guys, although you're built out, you do have opportunity with some of the spaces, in particular the two corridors you mentioned. And I believe that, Eric, you're going to talk about some of that detail. So probably more specific is better than my general. But be careful with incentives. Yes.
Got a question because you got it on the slide.
Yes.
You, you have marketing listed.
Yes.
That's always been a passion of mine. I am or was a small business owner before I retired. And I think that's a weakness that we have. Our chamber does an amazing job marketing our businesses, but I see other communities that have taken up the idea of marketing their community. I would just like to ask your opinion or feedback on, on that as far as whether that is a strategy to be looking at, or it's worked and where it hasn't.
Marketing, I'm going to be a little bit out of my wheelhouse here because we see so many of our communities do it. You know, the challenge with marketing is, one, making sure you know what it is that you want, what success looks like out of your marketing plan, right? Are you marketing for attraction? Are you marketing because you want your residents to feel good about your community? Are you marketing because you want to bring more tourists to your community? So one, being really clear about what you're marketing, why you're marketing, what the audience is. It's absolutely a role that local government can play in supporting their businesses. But marketing could be as narrowly defined as, we have a very specific corridor that's not doing well. We want to help these businesses. So we're going to create some kind of gift card program so that we can support that specific corridor. It could be that tight, or it could be broad enough to say, we want to put Glendora on the world map. And this is our tagline, and this is the strategy we're going to use to get that, and this is what success looks like. So I do think communities can do it well. The one thing that we hear over and over again is, our community has a great quality of life. There is not a community we know that says, we have a crappy quality of life. So you have to, I would say, be really clear in that messaging and what you're going to share. But I think it's an absolute great role that local government can play. But again, being very specific as to what your goals are and what you want to market and the purpose behind it.
Mayor, I would just add really quick. On your next meeting agenda, which will publish probably tomorrow, I'm looking at Kathleen back there, will be two items. One is our marketing and brand management contract with a third party that we're not forbid for. I think the second one is some website improvements as well. So while not economics specifically on the strategic plan initiatives that were there, that item is on there. How do you market, whether it's specific groups or other economic development agencies? But from a city's perspective overall, that contract will come to the council at your next council meeting.
All right. Benefits of economic development. We already talked about increased, increasing your revenue base, right? Lots of times when you're looking at the budget, and you guys are in a sweet spot as it relates to your budget right now. But oftentimes that conversation around budget is how do we slice the pie? When you're talking about economic development investments, it's how do we grow that pie? And growth doesn't necessarily mean how do we bring in more businesses and how do we get taller, bigger buildings? It means, you know, how do we help already existing employers thrive? How do we increase our revenue base at bare minimum, looking at what's already there? Job development, absolute must when you're talking about economic development, but it cannot be your only metric of success. For a long time, again, those of you that might remember, the state had trade and commerce back in the day, and their downfall was this, this claim that they'd created so many jobs. Well, at the end of the day, the businesses create the jobs, right? The employers create the jobs. You guys create the environment through which those employers can thrive. So being really careful if you're looking at jobs as a metric, whether it's retention or creation. But again, it's a very popular metric for economic development. Business retention, hopefully if you have a really good economic development program and you're engaged with your local businesses and helping them thrive, they're staying here. I mean, even if business attraction is your goal or new business growth is your goal, at the end of the day, once that business is on the ground, it becomes a retention effort for you, especially in an area where you guys have so many cities that are tight together. How easy would it be for a neighboring or not-so-far community to say, they've got that great business. I've got a bigger space for them. Glendora's built out. Let me go talk to them. So being mindful that you're also taking care of the businesses that you have here, that's an added benefit of a good economic development program. Economic diversification, again, you know, I'd mentioned it's really easy to look at the things that you see day to day, whether it's retail, blighted corners or other things, and focus on retail, restaurants, that type of experience, but also what other businesses are thriving in your community, understanding the data points there. I heard you say manufacturing. That's awesome because we know how important and critical manufacturing is, especially when you look at the economic multiplier from manufacturing. Yes. So if you guys do have the ability to look at those data points of what's thriving and what's also helping. So it might not be the biggest revenue generator for your, your budget, but it could make a huge difference in terms of the impacts that it has on your overall economy and the people within your community. So economic diversification, self-sufficiency, another really clear and important benefit of economic development. I think about this when it, as it relates to what happened during COVID. I was really happy to see how many communities had good reserves, were prepared for the impact that maybe some of the shutdowns could have had on them. But there were a lot of communities that were waiting for that CARES Act money because they needed it to hold them over and keep, and remain sustainable because we didn't know how long those shutdowns were going to be. And beyond that, needed the ARPA money to continue to invest in economic development as they were looking through recovery and resiliency. So having a good economic development program hopefully helps keep you in the good space you're in from a budget perspective, and you can be self-sufficient and less impacted by different disruptions in the economy. And then productive use of property, you guys are going to talk about this quite a bit, so I'm not going to go into that too much, but making sure that your property, you don't have those blighted spots, and it is being used strategically to benefit not just your residents, but also the, the, your revenue generation activity as well. All that to say, I spent a lot of time talking about revenue, making sure that you have a balanced economy and supporting your businesses, but it doesn't matter if it's not helping the people and serving the people of your community. It really truly is about making sure that they're part of that vision. It's great to hear that they're already super-engaged and supportive and trusting of the work that you all are doing. But finding ways to communicate with them in a way that they understand that you're trying to help them with their vision of the future, and making sure you're hearing clearly what their vision of the future is and incorporating it in this planning. So quality of life is an important and critical piece to your economic development program. It's not the afterthought, and it's not just a marketing tagline. Yes, please.
Adam, thank you for giving us the survey. So has anything like hugely changed from a couple of years? Because what has just been said is a very important point, the quality of, you know, life. So our, and I'm looking on page 13, that this is what, what our people said is what is important. So has that, I mean, has that been a big change? Or is that consistent with what we've seen pretty well year after year?
So one of the really important aspects, I think, of the survey is that it's been done for more than 10 years now.
Right.
And so the first time the survey was done, the public was like, everything's fine. We can't think of anything. There's a general question that's asked is, what was, what's the number one thing that will drive your quality of life? And if I'm not mistaken, in 2011, the top item was, I don't know. I can't think of anything. Life is grand. Everything's great. It's rainbows and unicorns for everybody. And I think that was in 2011. And overall, the quality of life scores have, no, there it is right there, on page 14. There you go. And so a, as some of the council members mentioned, there started to be some additional development. Route 66 specific plan was adopted. I'm sure Jeff can, can share with you all the details there, but it incentivized some lot consolidations. We have a lot of property along Route 66 here. The city doesn't have a history of a lot of redevelopment activity. And so a lot of Glendoran's own small parcels. And so to incentivize that consolidation, there had to be bonuses largely relating to density, height and such to. height and such to turn over that property. So a couple of projects that were done, there are actually quite a few projects that were done under the Route 66 specific plan. A lot of that stopped when some of that was pulled back a little bit. And so the number one concern almost overnight in the community was limit growth and development. And that transpired for the next three strategic plans, which happen every two to three years. Similar to, as the mayor Protan mentioned, similar to many agencies, after Martin v. Boise, there was an increase in homelessness almost overnight, combined with the state taking away redevelopment and less affordable units currently coming through. I think I've heard like 10,000 a year is the number that you have this explosion, which seems like overnight in homelessness. And Glendora was no exception. And so the number one concern, we did a homelessness survey, but asked the same question. What's your number one quality of life? And not only was homelessness the number one concern, it was the number one concern as a higher percentage than any concern in the history of our community survey. What is really interesting is, we waited till the vestiges of COVID somehow went away. Not that they're not gone away, but kind of calmed down before we did the community survey again. And I would add that as the survey's been done since 2011, through the overall quality of life with which residents say is excellent and good, still remains about the same. But there is a shift between excellent and good of about 10 percentage points overall. The number one concern is still homelessness. However, it is a less of a concern with our residents than were before. But for the very first time, we see residents wanting, as a higher concern, more things to do, more places to go, more things, more places to eat at than limit development and growth. While it still shows up, it shows up like 15 percentage points less than the first time it came up in the survey. So the residents do want more things to do. They want more places to go. They're worried about homelessness. But I think this community survey, despite COVID, the residents still think Glendora is a great place. And I think their needs and concerns are, are spot on. If you drive through the community, we have two very large shopping centers, one off of Grand and one off Route 66 that are empty, for the most part, that are blighted. They would like to see those activated and things to do and places to go. But public sentiment, to some extent, has changed with wanting some development. That still comes with, the last house that should have been built here is mine. However, I think it's important to note that our population has decreased over the last two years. We are trending closer to the 50,000 mark than we were before. So it is a slight decline, but Mayor Protan, in a nutshell, is kind of where the public's at.
You know, since we're on it and before I hop to the next slide, can we talk a little bit about limiting growth? Do you think that everybody has the same definition of what growth is? Especially based on what we just heard? This is a tough one, because oftentimes when I hear limiting growth, it's in the context of, we have a community identity and we don't want that to change. And again, pointing to, I don't want my quality of life to change because there's a new business and so now the streets are busier, those kinds of things. It might be worth it to get clarity on what limiting growth means.
Might depend if we're talking about adding a hobby lobby or a Trader Joe's. They're fine with that.
Yeah.
But as far as high density, you know, you know, five to seven-story buildings, they're not going to have that conversation. I think, as was mentioned earlier, around three stories is probably where the comfort zone is with the proper setbacks. You know, there's qualifiers to all of this, your question.
I'm wondering, is that, when you're talking about tall buildings, is it mostly housing that you're talking about, right? Not necessarily office, not that there's a huge office market right now?
Yeah, residential.
I won't delve into it.
Well, and I'd just like to share. I think one of the things that we experienced here is our, our first two projects as we delved into high-density housing was, in my opinion, too much, too quick. Went from having the condo complexes that we had here in town were not real high-density, to a point that we had a few projects built that were very high-density. And I think that jump put a lot of the residents on edge, including myself, is that some of that is acceptable. But when we talk to people about growth, there's not a lot of people that are completely against growth. They would just like to make sure that they understand what that growth is going to look like and that it.
That makes sense. And I suspect that goes a lot back to your communications campaign as well, how you're not just hearing what the community says, but how you're sharing your plans for the future. That makes sense. Okay.
I was just going to follow up on what the mayor said. I think timing is a big piece of it. Cities to the west of us did some of that high-density housing around the train line. But the train came right about that time. So people were like, oh, okay, we get it. Well, we started doing ours and still the train hasn't been completed to here. And so people couldn't wrap their head around what it was that was happening. So I think timing is such a big piece of that.
I'm going to continue. I have a lot of slides left, but I'm going to speak quickly because you're going to get the slide deck. And I've gone through this with your team. So they're certainly, they understand the tools and the concepts that are on here and can delve deeper into them with you. If you want me to go into the weeds of any of these, though, stop me, please, for sure. So again, big picture from the economic development professionals' perspective. It used to be when we had redevelopment agencies, we had a redevelopment association that focused a lot on how do you assemble sites? How do you put a capital stack together to put a project together? A lot of that expertise, when we lost redevelopment and the association went away, we lost that expertise at the local level amongst staff as well. In fact, I would imagine that if you are a city or county staff person that knows how to do these types of activities, that you are highly coveted and probably can find an easy position with any community if needed. So this is a really important skill set to have on your team. Folks that know how to assemble that, that land. Folks that know how to bring these tools together in a way that they can deliver projects in a timely fashion and in a way that it's, the investment makes sense for the community as well. You have that experience on your team, so they can tell you a little bit more about how they do that work. When we talk about economic, yes, please.
Could somebody at some point talk about the TIF districts? Because our neighbor to the east has one, a Laverne. And I've, I know a little bit, but not enough to really intelligently talk about it. But I'm interested in seeing if that would have any sort of bearing on us. So I don't want to interrupt the flow, but if that could be, maybe Eric, you probably know a lot about that. But I'm just curious if, if it would help us. I'm not advocating it, I'm just curious.
I think historically, we've shied away from any sort of districts that redistribute property tax here. But that said, I, I think it is, it's a relevant conversation and ones that, it's one that comes up quite frequently, especially with the vacuum that redevelopment lost. One of the more difficult areas is trying to get all the players, including the school districts, to be on the same page for the highest and best use of some of that money. But happy to go in more detail as time allows.
Can I give you the, just a little bit more aggressive perspective on that? I love TIF districts. And so I don't know if it's right for your community or not. But we've introduced, we've worked on a lot of legislation, especially recently, to make sure that the different types of TIF districts that are available to cities and counties are ones that can really help you. I mean, obviously, the challenges are, you know, the tax base. What are you doing with that increment? But we have, we have a really, I think it's probably about 50 pages, a new legal primer we just put out. It will not put you to sleep, but it does talk about the districts and the different ways they can be used. Especially now, there's a new one that's a community, sorry, climate resilience district, which does have the ability to bring in more revenue to it than you would see in the other forms of districts, the tax increment financing districts that are currently out there. So I can send you guys some copies for your conversation. I love TIF districts. Move on to. No, no, no. No, I just think there's an opportunity if used right. It doesn't mean it's right for every community, but unfortunately, well, I don't want to say unfortunately. Fortunately, the legislature did give us replacement tools. They're not as powerful as redevelopment was. So you have to do layering. You have to be creative. Again, that's where it matters, that you have staff that understand what those, those tools do and how they can be layered to help you achieve your goals. Because they can get very complex, but definitely worth looking at. So from our perspective, since 1980, we've always talked about economic development from the perspective of how do you support your business community? Whether it's retaining and expanding existing businesses, creating business, or attracting new business. So a lot of the work we've done and a lot of what we've seen local governments do is focus on supporting their businesses. Sometimes it's city staff or county staff, sometimes in partnership with the chamber and contracts that have gone to chambers and other organizations like economic development corporations. But this is regular activity that you see jurisdictions engage in. In fact, cities and counties, again, primarily cities, have made big investments in supporting their business community. So these are tactics for supporting your already existing businesses. Again, I'm not going to go super into the weeds of these. You'll get the slide deck and then the staff have the expertise to walk you through any of these. Startup of new business, since you mentioned incubators, I will say that starting, helping new businesses thrive in California, I mean, we are leaders as it comes to innovation and creation, creating new business. But it is an investment. And it's one of the hardest forms of economic development because not only does it take an investment, you have to have a realistic timeline. Just because you have an incubator or you've created some ability to support entrepreneurs that have an idea that are trying to get started, doesn't mean they're going to turn into the next Apple or Dell overnight. Like, they need time to grow. So being mindful of what your expectations are if you're investing in a business startup program for the city.
Now, I want to interject with that. We have so many of the businesses that are leaving. And typically, what would happen is, you'd have a large business, then you'd have some of those employees thinking, you know what? I can do this. I can do it better or cheaper, and they'll spin it off. But when those businesses leave, those big businesses, you lose that opportunity. And so you're correct. It is very long and takes a long time to create some of these incubators and create some of these businesses from scratch. And, but unfortunately, this is what we're left with now with all the multitude of businesses leaving. We no longer have that incubator within an existing business. So the game has completely changed.
I think communities are getting more creative in how they're helping businesses, especially, I mean, a lot of it you see in the restaurant space or possibly the retail space. But there's other ways to help businesses or people with an idea. Obviously, if you have a business retention and expansion program and you're doing business visitation, you know, talking to, to your business owners and hopefully talking to your commercial brokers, they might know if a business is leaving and maybe that's an opportunity to intervene and say, look, is there a way we can support your employees? Maybe they're interested in taking it over. I mean, you have to get creative with those tactics. But yes, I understand, it is a challenge. Attraction of new business, you're going to have two experts, way more expert than me, especially as it relates to retail, talking about business attraction. But the only point that I want to make sure that we've discussed is making sure we're talking about knowing your competitive advantages and disadvantages and that you're unique. So one thing, and this has always been the case as long as I've been with Calhoun, is we see communities often comparing themselves to their neighbor. Or maybe it's a jurisdiction, a community, a couple of jurisdictions down the road on the freeway or say, they have this, why don't we have this? They look like this, why don't we look like this? And really, you know, you might not have the same circumstances that allow you to look the same as that community. And you're unique. I mean, I heard you talk very clearly about, we don't want the same stores every so many miles. So embracing that uniqueness, but also understanding clearly what your competitive advantages and disadvantages are. Because as you're trying to get those businesses in the community, you have to have the business case to get them there. And they're looking at very specific things, not just, oh, Glendora is a great place to live. They're also looking at, is the market there? Can I really thrive as a business? How does the city treat its already existing businesses? What are the other commercial or industrial districts look like in the city? So just making sure you're really clear that your goals and what you're trying to achieve is based in the reality of what's happening in your community. Then again, you have more expert folks than me that are going to talk to you about attracting retail. The point here again is just making sure you know who you are and being clear on what your goals are and what you can deliver on. Types of economic development activities. PPIC several years ago did a research of California cities to find out what they're doing. And so specific to California, they had about 190 cities respond. I wanted to share this with you so that you could see what your colleagues are doing as it relates to economic development. But these are the types of, this is the type of work you see jurisdictions doing. Economic development is not new. It's new to some people now, and certainly how it's getting used now is different in some cases. However, communities, cities and counties, again, in particular, have been doing thoughtful economic development for a very long time. And this is what it looks like in practice. Where to begin? About three minutes, here we go. It's really important that you guys have a, an internal conversation with yourselves and you're having it, which is great. So these are rhetorical, but you know, especially when you're super excited about economic development, you have goals, things you want to achieve, it's really important to make sure that that's based in what's already happening? What do we already have in place? Who's already on our team? What industries are thriving? Again, speaking to having those data points of knowing what's happening in your community, knowing what businesses are thriving and what industries can thrive that may not be here. So having a good understanding of that. Also, where does your revenue come from? Thinking long-term, you guys, again, are in a great space as it relates to that. Asking the right budget questions about generating revenue and also where you're investing it. And then are your timelines realistic? Usually, when I'm asked to come to a community to talk about economic development, by the time I'm there, and this is not the case here, so I want to be really clear, more often than not, the staff have been asked to do something impossible and the conversation we're having is around timelines. Like, is it, is this possible? And can your community really support what's been asked of them? So being clear on your timelines. So the point about having the right timing, even with the development, I mean, it matters, understanding your timelines and are they realistic? And then measuring success. You guys have this on your agenda, know what success looks like? You're going to talk about it in depth. MAR, just an acronym to help you think about goals and success. And then the final piece, going back to the comments I think everybody's made here is about how Glendora is unique and that economic development isn't one-size-fits-all. It has to be unique to what your goals are. So as you guys get really clear on the things that you want to achieve and get clear on how you're going to communicate it, part of that has to be talking about what really matters to your residents and how you share that and how it's unique to Glendora. So that, and we made it on time. I know, you guys were great. Thank you for engaging and talking so openly about economic development. I know it's a tough topic, so thank you. Nice to see you all still smiling. Yes.
Thank you. Okay, before we take a short break, does anybody have any other questions or thoughts at this point?
They just put me here, I don't know.
Okay, so with that, for once, we're on time. So let's take a short break and we'll be back in 10 minutes. And if I say 10, you'll take longer. Reopen the meeting and next up, we have a regional economic development report by Eric DeChard. Welcome, Eric.
Great, good morning. Thanks for including me in this important workshop. And I wanted to at least elaborate a little bit more on my background. I, of course, work for the City of Pasadena. I think you've heard that a couple of times. But in that role, I did have a seat at the table for the San Gober Valley Economic Partnership and the LA County Economic Development Corporation. It provided me a little bit more insight on other cities. I also previously, before starting with Pasadena, was with the City of Arcadia. And I just wanted to note that Pasadena, even though it is a larger city with some diverse issues and interesting things to tackle, we, we did see it as a place with maybe 10-plus different neighborhoods. So we almost treated each business district and kind of component of the city slightly differently because some areas were more urban and historic, others were a bit more suburban, like East Pasadena. And we really customized our approach. And we really customized our approach at the time when I worked there to those different needs and values. But I think with more of that regional perspective and through Pasadena and Arcadia and as a resident of Glendora, I kind of assembled some information that I knew would supplement some of the other things that you're hearing today. So with that being said, we have the traditional areas of economic development that we just mentioned between making sure that there are jobs for the residents of the community, that there is a sufficient set of goods and services available for just living your life in a community, and that the economy is stable, and that really just bringing money from the outside. Ultimately, you can only be so successful if you're just rotating currency and money within a small space. You need to be bringing money from the outside. So traditionally, economic development was looking at that as a primary goal. And then all that supports local government and security, police, parks, recreation, roads, bridges, sidewalks, all the traditional things that local government is supposed to be dealing with. An important revenue source comes from that economic development activity. And the reality is also that the competition with adjacent cities, especially in a larger urban environment, was a real thing. You didn't want to lose out to your neighbor in getting a business or some opportunity. So it was a healthy competition that sometimes led to unfortunate competition with incentives and kind of too much local money going to support a corporation. But it also has a healthy aspect to that conversation. More recently, small business support has been more top of mind as, you know, the Walmarts of the world and Costcos have big economic benefits to a community. They also do have some negative connotations to taking support and money away from small businesses. So economic development professionals have looked more recently on how to address making sure that historic downtowns and some other locally owned businesses have resources and avenues of success as well. Job training is something that is not in the wheelhouse of a particular city and city government, but it's part of the equation. If you're trying to recruit a business and they need people that know about software or they need to know about something in the medical industry and you don't have the staff or the, you know, the people in your community that can support that, that is a problem. And there are, in the broader LA area, fortunately, a great labor pool. For the most part, there are lots of people around, but they may not be immediately kind of adjacent to Glendora. And if they still have to commute an hour to get to Glendora, that could be a problem for filling some space. So I just list that as a component to economic development that needs the partnership with adjacent K-12 and community colleges. Social media, like it or not, is now part of the equation as well. Being more eventful between the Chamber of Commerce and with bids, trying to create some energy is now part of the kind of standard annual pool of resources that economic development professionals are being more involved with. And data-driven activity and placemaking, I'm going to get into in the adjacent slide. My mic off. I'm going to try and fold that into different elements of this presentation, which will be a bit more of the context, a few stats on jobs, and then getting into the office space, retail, restaurant trends, institutional activity, and placemaking and opportunity sites. So I'll go ahead and jump into that one at a time. From a context standpoint, as Jeff mentioned, we are fortunate that we are part of the broader LA area, touching Inland Empire, Orange County. Our residents can travel within an hour and hit lots of locations where jobs are available. From a retail perspective, the smaller circle in the middle, that is our kind of local market. And that kind of hits to the three-seven mile conversation that we've heard so much about. And that is constrained even more by the fact that we have the mountains. It's a beautiful geographic feature for us, but it does kind of slice into our radius of opportunity from both the job and the retail perspective. So I like to at least encourage you to think about Glendora as kind of this fancy Venn diagram. So you have your population and a portion of that is considered to be the labor force. And you have a part of that labor force that has the benefit of also living in Glendora. But most of the jobs that reside in the community come from people coming in. And vice versa, the people that live in Glendora, vast majority, leave the city to go work. And if you kind of break down our labor force, so the residents of Glendora that work, it will generally reflect the diversity of all the jobs available in LA County. This is a little bit too small to see, but you know, professional positions and healthcare and you've got certainly retail management and all the kind of teachers, all part of the mix of how the Glendora labor force is made up. And that visitor little blob is hopefully those shoppers, those are people that are coming for various reasons to Glendora, that really are part of our daytime population. And we are very much dependent on the macroeconomy. This is just a quick reminder that currently our unemployment rate is actually in a good place. We have very low unemployment. That certainly does fluctuate a great deal with the macro recessions. And you can see the kind of past trend where when there's a recession, unemployment goes up and slowly fades down and that very weird COVID spike that happened about three years ago. But we're back down to a very healthy rate. And those people that are working are in, from a commercial real estate standpoint, and the three segments that are the more traditional breakdown of commercial real estate, office, retail, and industrial. So on the left-hand side there, you see the stats for the county, 15-plus percent beginning of the year. It's only gone up in office space. Retail is generally stable, but the numbers you get normally only reflect the multi-tenant type of retailers. That doesn't always reflect just storefronts. So if you have just an individual retailer in an individual building owned by a single family, that doesn't always get put into kind of the stats for the county. And then the industrial rate on the left there in LA County has been very, very low. On the right-hand side of the screen, you see just the fact that office buildings, even though they're trending up as far as vacancy, there is a big difference between large buildings and the smaller ones. So if you have a smaller building, less than 50,000 square feet, the health of the occupancy is generally better. And in LA County, if you have a large one, whether it's in downtown LA or some other kind of central district area, those are the ones that have been suffering more recently for a variety of reasons. Here's Glendora, by the way. So the total commercial pool of space is a little bit different here. Not a lot of office. According to CoStar, only 33 buildings with a vacancy hovering closer to 3%. So that is an anomaly in LA County. That generally is much, much higher. Retail is still pretty good. It's that industrial that spiked more recently, mostly because there's not much of it. And I think it's because of the ARPCO space on the Lone Hill that pushed that up dramatically. So again, that's just a smaller pie of industrial space. So just as a reference, but if you look at office trends, it really is the high vacancies in the metro areas to the right. Again, a little bit too small to see, but you have San Francisco, Houston, LA, New York, off to the right with kind of very high vacancy rates. And these are direct vacancies. If you include subleases, it's even higher. And then at the bottom of that list is the Inland Empire, which is again relatively healthy compared to some of these other metro areas. So I just say that as a reference for Glendora because we're somewhere in between. We have some of the issues that I'm going to mention here, but not all of them. But if you look at the national trends of the challenges, the whole COVID, are we working from home? Is it now three or four days a week? That has put a lot of tenants on their heels, indecisive on what to do with their kind of long-term real estate. So they have not committed as they may have in the past and they have sometimes pulled back. And there's been, you know, an impact. So there have been some landlord defaults. I think we're going to hear more about that in the future, especially again, the central business districts and the kind of a looming banking issue related to that. Because they can't refinance their way out of it now because the interest rates are so high. So that might hit a point where you just have people that have owned buildings, are not getting the tenants that they want, and then they're going into bankruptcy on certain specific sites. But in Glendora, because the office pool is so small, it doesn't have a direct impact. But because the financing's not there for new office buildings and because there's an oversupply in the region, if people are looking, they're going to be kind of looking around. And the likelihood of Glendora getting a brand-new office building in the near future that's not medical is probably pretty low. Eric?
Could I just ask you on your previous slide, is the asking rent rate, is that tied to why our vacancy rate is so low? In other words, is our asking rent rate low? That's why the vacancy rate's low? Or is that? Can you kind of illuminate that?
I would say that the east San Gabriel Valley kind of office market is pretty much around that rate. And if you go west, it's north of three easy. And then I, you know, that fluctuates depending on the vacancy. But it's not just city by city. It's more of a kind of a regional calculation because they have to be competitive with San Dimas and with Laverne and so. But yeah, that is down from what it was just four years ago, probably.
Really? Okay, thank you.
Eric, I want to also add a question to this. So to my earlier question that I had as far as it's more economical to build residential homes, in this situation, I've been an advocate to have condoized office buildings because we have a lot of professionals here in Glendora and they travel to Pasadena and Los Angeles. And so if they have the opportunity to be here, would they be here? Do you have any research that would support that?
I have been involved in a few kind of commercial condo projects and they always seem to get a reasonable return on them. But the development world is not geared toward that. You just don't have a lot of the same types of developers that are willing to kind of go through that. With, commercial developers like to kind of get it stabilized and then they sell it to some institutional entity for a profit. So there's kind of a whole sequence of how that's done. And just, I don't see more than a handful of people in the LA area just even pursuing that. But they always seem to be a kind of a, especially in the medical industry, doctors who are just sick and tired of paying, you know, some other property owner month-to-month. They want to own their own space. So I think that is something to consider.
So if there's a way we can help them with that process, they will come?
If it's a good site and it's next to some resources that they find valuable. I personally don't think it'd find a place on the middle of Arrow Highway and just kind of in a random spot. But if it was in a good spot next to medical hospital, Route 66.
And help with our daytime traffic, help with our restaurants. Thank you.
So yeah, so that, I'll move forward with, to the next slide here. So yeah, so ultimately, I just wanted to give some of that context because there's certainly big cycles in kind of office development, retail, and housing. But the office sector in particular, I think is going to be at a lull for a while. But the recent, more than recent, but in the last decade or so, it's the technology component to office space that has been the hottest. So if you look at that in the San Gabriel Valley, we certainly have it spread around. But many of the companies that are involved in either life science, technology, or in software, they still like to cluster around certain parts of LA. So Santa Monica, South Bay, Orange County, and the tri-city area of Burbank, Glendale, Pasadena have been really the primary nodes. A lot of that relates to the research that's being done at these universities. We are really, we have an impressive set of institutions in Southern California that, compared to Boston and even the Bay Area, they hold their own. And it's really because they are spread apart a little bit more than those other areas that we've not had the same level of investment traditionally. But I think that's changing. And so this is still something to pay attention to. And Glendora still would have a chance to get one of those unicorn companies that they don't want to be paying high rent and they've graduated maybe from the Burbank-Pasadena area. They realize that they have many of their employees coming from the East San Gabriel Valley that they just want to own their own building. But that's still, it's a possibility. We've seen that happen before, but it's not going to be happening on a regular basis. And then we mentioned before incubator space. So that is, I think, something that's always worth pursuing or paying attention to. We have some young entrepreneurs coming out of Citrus College. We've got people that have been downsized out of companies that are eager to start something on their own. Coworking space, like the WeWorks and the Cross Campus, they've gone through some kind of weird changes lately because of COVID as well. But they still seem to be part of the economy. We work totally overextended themselves, but we do have one coworking space in Glendora right now, midway on Route 66. I forgot the name of it, but you know, that, yeah. And I think that's a helpful asset to have in a community where people don't want to work at home, want to be part of a kind of local set of entrepreneurs and they can have some elbow room if they're hiring one or two people. So that's a good thing to have. And there are different flavors of that. If it's more on the software side or even, there's a couple in the San Gabriel Valley that focus on life sciences. So there's equipment involved in it too. That's a little bit more of an elaborate exercise, but it's something that we should, locally, we should pay attention to. Because it's a good way for entrepreneurs to feel supported and hopefully growing it here. I didn't want to avoid talking about institutions because even though they are normally nonprofits and they have been here a while, they provide a nice stabilizing influence on the local economy. I'll show you a slide in a moment that so many of the growing professions are medical-related for good or bad, but that's just the reality. So having a hospital in town and having doctors that want to invest in space and hiring people, that is something that we should be taking advantage of. And Citrus College is, again, any academic institution that is providing a good ground level of support for young professionals is a big plus for the economy. But here's the, it's going to be too small, but if you But here's the, it's going to be too small, but if you look at the 20 fastest growing jobs in the United States. The, the light blue represents the medical industry. And so the right side of that chart is how much money people are making. And ultimately what it's showing that you have growth in the medical industry. You've got growth in some specialized software. But the, the blue dots below the line are the ones that are contracting. These are professional, kind of more clerical jobs, legal secretaries and people that have a lot of office work. We just don't need those types of numbers of people involved in a kind of business anymore. So there, it's just, the whole point is that you have to have a local workforce that is reflecting the future of the kind of job market. And, and it's just, again, it may not be on the, the city of Glendora to be responsible for that. But making sure that Glendora unified, the other K-12 schools are at least paying attention. And then Citrus College, the picture there just shows one of the health kind of academic divisions of the college graduating a group of people. And you know, that's exactly the, the good connection that we need. And then the other chart on the bottom right shows in red the unemployment rate. But it's crossed over with the jobs available. So there are way more jobs available than people that are looking for work. That's a big problem, but there's a disconnect with the types of skills that they have. So it's something that local teams have to kind of figure out how to. And this is not a problem just for Glendora. This is a national problem. But where it is solved, you, you get a leg up and getting an opportunity. But transitioning to retail, Glendora proper is in red. And I Xed out the part of the mountains that really don't have any people. But we are part of, well, we kind of establish our own trade area, right? So this is where people from Glendora might leave the city to go shop. And ultimately as, as staff and real estate brokers are talking to potential tenants, they're painting this kind of picture of how many people live in the area, the household income, average age, academic kind of levels of achievement. This is how, for good or worse, retailers kind of judge a community. And so they.
Eric, where did you get your number $140,000 as the average household home income?
This came from Valerie. You guys helped me with this one.
Don't believe that's correct.
We actually pulled this from the retail coach who we hired to put together a data snapshot of a demographics for ICSC.
All of my research is around $100,000, even on our documentation.
Household or regional, I mean, so there's, there's different median incomes and there's household incomes oftentimes.
Median average.
Yeah.
We check into that to see if that's correct.
Double check.
Yeah. So between median and average and.
Go ahead. Eric, I, and, and if you're going to talk about this more, just tell me to be quiet. But going back up to the training, the workforce.
Okay.
So is there any way that a city could partnership with an APU, eminent health, a city of hope to be an attractor for some of these jobs? In, in a tangible way, I mean, we, we go out, we talk to them, we have space. We can build you something. And I know the city staff's going, whoa, 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 whoa. So I'm just kind of blue, you know, sky. But, but I'm on a college board. And the PA bubble here, a physician. So we started that a year ago, two years ago, we had 33 spots. We had 4,000 apps. Second year, we had 33 spots. We had 3,500 apps. So you're absolutely right. The medical world is trying to shrink costs, be more efficient. That's kind of an oxymoron within the medical world. If, if you've ever gone to a hospital and you wonder, is like, is this efficient really? I don't know. But, but is there a way that a city like ours could, with eminent health, with City of Hope so close and you know, APU pushing it out, you know, their scientists, nurses? Is there a way that we could partnership with them in a more aggressive way?
I'll just mention a few things that I'm aware of. So the, the San Gabriel Valley Economic Partnership and Citrus College, PCC are involved with that. Cal Poly and a few other institutions are realizing that there are of course declining kind of demands and increased demands for certain skill sets. And healthcare is, is on top of mind for them. Eminent and Methodist USC Huntington have been involved in those discussions too, to try and figure out how local certificate more level educational achievement can be pursued. So there is a dialogue going on. So I, I would say that that is at least one that I know has been going on for at least four years. And how, when that starts to have success and when we see where those graduates are and aligning those with the kind of particular medical groups that might be in a growth mode. That's where you can hopefully kind of start to overlap, say, hey, we just have a graduating class. Making sure that the professors that are teaching those might be aware of exactly where the job placements might take place. And then you make the leap of, okay, where, which ones of those have their leases running out? You know, that one of those might be, their lease for 50,000 square feet might be up in three years. And you want to be ahead of the curve in introducing them to vacant space in your community. So it's that kind of linkage of all those things that I think is what it takes now to kind of to get ahead of, not just the competition, but just really make the, to keep players aware of what might exist as an opportunity. So to retail, and yes, we'll, we'll look at the household income that, you're right, that, anyway, the average, median. We'll take a look at the, all those numbers. But the point is that retailers, as they are considering different locations, typically look at that as, as one level of trying to understand if they have a spot or a place in the competition. And it could be for food, it could be for retail sales, it could be for a wide range of activity. But this is the typical lens. But it's on this map that I wanted to show, and it's been mentioned before. But Glendora was established and grew up for decades without the 210 freeway. And you have Route 66 and Arrow Highway that really were used as the primary east-west corridors. And the, the urban fabric, suburban fabric, the partialization, how that, those streets were used or set up in the 30s and 40s. And was fully disrupted by the 210 and really just not having the, the same number of cars on those other streets. So it moved away from being a retail street to more of just a commercial street. So that's why the auto dealers and others abandoned and moved away from Route 66 and Arrow Highway. And you, and our, the backfill that we've received is just a whole different kind of set of, of companies. So the national retailers, the, the three to seven mile repeat that was mentioned is a very real thing across our entire country. You can go to ICSC conference, which is the, the, the big retail conference in Vegas every year. And these companies are the ones that are just trying to matchmake with the standard strip mall developers to see who goes where. And it's not very exciting, but they all co-locate. They, they all want to be next to each other. So you won't find these in random spots along a corridor so much as with the retail friends. So that they could kind of always kind of work together and attracting different consumers. So that way they can at least, people can combine a trip or they, the developers have a little bit more control over, you know, the mix of a particular development or, or mall. But again, this is a reality. Glendora, I think, does its, a good job of getting its fair share of those types of companies. But at the same time, there aren't many standouts that, you know, the, the next city down the road has exactly the same ones.
Could I ask, could I ask staff how, how we got Bob's to come down and rent out Victoria, Bed Bath Beyond? And I mean, did we go after them or did they just find us out? And Victoria's Secret's the same thing. I mean, they're a national brand.
Right. Well, I think.
Did we go after them? Did they just find us and?
I think you look at the ownership of that property. The owner of the property is a company called Vestar. And Vestar is one of these real estate firms that owns shopping center. They might, are they national or are they just regional southwest of the United States? So, so they have connections with all of these retailers. As Eric said, if you go to ICSC, you see all the same folks. If you go across the United States, you see the same retail, regional retailers, you see the same repeat, repeat, repeat. That's the nature of country, I suppose, with respect to retail centers. And if they're owned by large companies like Vestar, for example, Vestar, you know, we reached out to them. They said, thank you for the offer to help, but you know, we're, we're a big company. We know what we're doing. We'll find somebody to fill that space and you will like them. And, and that was it.
So could we ask them to help our friend on, on Grand to fill the?
I'm not sure anyone can help our friend on Grand.
Well, I'm just saying, I, you know, I mean, obviously they, they can step up and make it, make it work. So.
Well, they're, they're a real estate company. They own, they own shopping centers.
We're having a, a group that has dozens of locations and they know which retailers are out there looking and growing and which ones are retracting. They probably knew in advance of Bed Bath Beyond going away, that they had two or three similarly sized retailers that are trying to grow in the Southern California market, which ones to kind of call quickly and see if there's a match. And if you have another retail owner, maybe on Grand, who only owns one or two, it's just a whole different animal. And unfortunately, they just don't have the depth and the connections to make that quick transition if there's a vacancy. And it does hinder it a great deal because there's a trust level. Because, you know, if you're a retailer, you kind of know that's a whole bunch of developers that are in the same boat. But that they can manage properly, that their questions can go answered, that there's a professionalism, that they might even have a break on if they hit a troubled month. They, all sorts of relationship levels. But if you go to a developer or owner of a property, not even developer, that only has one or two sites, that doesn't have a, a really a track record with that company and the maintenance is under par, they'll just shy away from it. It would have to be a spectacular kind of bet for them to take the risk. And, and I think there's a couple of sites in Glendora, and I'll go through them, that unfortunately we're kind of in that boat right now. Yeah.
I'll just add one, you know, everyone looks at the shopping centers being the same shopping center. But Vestar owns all the property on their side, where the other side, as we know from our drive-throughs, is more fragmented, different ownership. So a different process staff would have to take too. I think it's an important perspective to point out is that is solely controlled on one side, which makes a quick turnaround a little faster for the reasons you just heard.
So I'm going further into retail trends. So we talked about stores closing, Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, Foot Locker, Bath &amp; Body Works, Best Buy, Walmart. At least closing 20 stores. Those numbers there represent how many stores are closing nationally. CVS really got aggressive in opening stores a decade ago. Now they're having to close many. Walgreens is kind of the same boat. And, but some are opening smaller locations. We talked about Best Buy a moment ago. The irony of them having at least a customer service kind of component to their business. But if they are shedding real estate and just having really small stores, they're getting closer and closer to what the online shopping experience is. But they're, they're going that direction. DSW is one of those as well. Target, especially in urban areas where they can't find real estate for large stores, they're just opening smaller ones. And Barnes &amp; Noble, which, you know, you, we have to pay attention as a community that we have a few of these retailers that if they just decide to be in a third of the space, then we've got a lot of new vacant space as well to contend with. Store openings, so you know, as a whole, I read one article that we've had as many store openings as closings. Look at the types of stores that are opening and it's not as exciting. The, the chart on the right, hard to read, but it, it shows the ones that are on the top of the list of store openings. You have Dollar General, Family Dollar, Dollar, I mean, it's all these really cheap retailers. And unfortunately, they're finding some traction in the marketplace because, you know, for whatever reason. But that's not exactly the type of retailer I think Glendora is looking for. But those are the ones that might gobble up an empty space. And then you're kind of stuck with it for seven, 10 years. So sometimes economic development is playing defense. Where if you are working with a property owner and you know there's vacant space and that owner is contemplating a, a pretty bad deal, you have to be blunt as a community that, you know, you really don't want that. And having the kind of connection with that owner to be able to be, have that honest conversation is, it's hard to get to that point, but it's worth, worth the effort. So some interesting trends in retail that is worth mentioning. Because it's a big changing environment. So consumer data is very complex and elaborate and scary. But it's becoming more and more part of the way things are done. You know, people want your email address and even your phone number to sign up for this deal. And now suddenly you're in the database with all sorts of things. The map to the right there is, there's now the ability to identify through previous purchases and where people are housed, you know, who the visitors are in New York City and where the kind of locals are on an hourly basis. So that's happening now in tourist areas and downtowns. Glendora, you know, technically could pay for it and they get it done too. We could probably guess a little bit easier, but that just kind of shows you the, you know, the more sophisticated world in, in retail. Augmented reality is a, a new thing too, that if you are buying clothes or trying on makeup, you can do it virtually now. You can put your furniture in a picture of your house. This is what new retailers are kind of moving toward. And it's another kind of level of challenge for local business owners to go up against national retailers. Private labels, the next one on the list, 10, 15 years ago, wasn't really a thing. The, the member buying the can of soup with the blue stripe on it. That, it's been elevated quite a bit. So that Trader Joe's and the Kirkland brands are actually sought after. And more groups are looking at, at that. More experience-related spending, you know, you might buy stuff online or you know, you go to your standard grocery stores. But hey, on a Friday or Saturday night, you want to go somewhere and just get out of the house and go somewhere different. There has to be an experience to that, that retailers are, are trying to figure out the best place. And that's going to relate to kind of place making, which I'll mention a few more slides. But you have to create a cool spot for people that want to just hang out and shop and go to eat. Smaller stores, we just mentioned that, that's a trend, blurring the lines between online and bricks and mortar. And then food, luckily, people are eating more outs, you know, eating out and that'll always be a component. always be a component to neighborhood retail, and that doesn't seem to be going away. And then psychographics, you may have heard of that term, between Esri and all these different kind of retail consulting firms, trying to work with national brands. It is really kind of assembling the household income and with what kind of magazines that you subscribe to and, you know, what, how, exactly how old you are and, you know, all sorts of things that get into a psychographic that will stereotype you as a consumer. And different retailers will then go to where they have the largest number of, you know, silver sophisticates is the fancy word for older people who have some discretionary money. So, not that I take personal offense to that, but they, so, and they have like more urban, kind of more youthful categories, because, you know, those are, they're spending money as well. But that is just kind of a component to, to retail. Leakage, I know that this group was particularly interested in what the Glendora leakage stats are, and staff has provided me with, with this. This is organized by the gross, at, what is that? Anyway, the loss in each category. So if you look at gas stations, technically, we only have two-thirds of what we should for a community our size. And we're losing $107 million per year of people buying gas outside of our border. So that's how you read that first line. Do we care that we don't have as many gas stations? That's a different question for you. Same with liquor stores, right? And a couple of other of these categories. Maybe it's, it's just fine, but when it comes to sporting goods, maybe general merchandise, those are things that then paint a picture of, hey, if we pay attention to some of those good retailers and where we have vacancies, there could be an opportunity. So, but overall, but Glendora, it, it's not very leaky. Most, most of it is satisfied within our boundaries in the, in the primary categories. That could be in others here. And then this was discussed at the beginning, just the, the ability to tra, to attract companies does relate to kind of the growth of a community. And Glendora's not alone in this challenge. There are plenty of places throughout the country that have the same challenge. So if you look at the two, five and 10 mile radius of Glendora and the population projections, it's flat in the immediate term and going down in the next 10 years. So, it's not dramatic, but the point is that still doesn't, when a retailer's looking and they look at this, it's just a factor. So they either want to be part of something exciting and new, a new development, or they have to be convinced that, oh, there's so many more people that are going to be living here in the future that you need to be here. Minus those two things, it just becomes a bigger challenge for significance, any, any group to invest in a, you know, you can call it stable, or you can call it flat, or you can call it stagnant, use your euphemism. Restaurants. So, Glendora currently does okay on the restaurant front, even though you may not always be craving what is offered locally. But if you look at the, every, every year, there's a hot trends for restaurants and, you know, one year it's pizza, another year it's burgers or whatever. But this year, the number one is experience and local culture, which is a positive, because that, at least when I was more youthful and my parents, you'd go to like the safe, national restaurant chain, because you just knew what to get, you were going to get. And, you know, some independent restaurant, you wouldn't want to just walk in the door not knowing anything. But now with Yelp and TripAdvisor, and you have, you have a broader sense now of, yeah, other people like this place, I'm willing to go there. So, I think that aligns well with the local, locally-owned restaurant, or someone who may have tried something in West Covina and now they're ready to open up their second spot. Those might be a better target for Glendora than just kind of getting a, I won't disparage any particular national chain, but you see where I'm going. So this is, I think, is an opportunity that needs to be, just, you always have to pay attention to that. It's a difficult challenge. In my previous role, we would sometimes even be involved in a LA-wide chefs kind of conference, just because we're trying to figure out who, which chef is doing what. And we try and pull them out of their solo location in Santa Monica to try something in Pasadena. But, you know, Glendora has its own version of that, that to pay attention to for, for restaurants. And I don't know if there are any vacant restaurants in Glendora, there might be, but it's important to understand if there is, same as office or retail, if there is a lease terming out, that you're in conversation with the property owner. Because he may not, he or she may not be totally satisfied with that tenant, but because it's a safe renewal, but that's the time to kind of kick in, hey, have you considered some other, some other new group? Placemaking. So, if you have family coming to your house or a friend and they say, "Oh, you know, I'm going to have some free time. Where should I go in Glendora?" You kind of have to ask yourself, what would you recommend? And, you know, for me, the village is the automatic kind of first choice, but in a, in a city our size, we should at least have three or four ideas that come to mind. And I just, it's more of a challenge to the group to think, where, where else can we create a place so that we could recommend that someone go hang out there for two, three hours and enjoy themselves in, in our own community? Not sending them to Clermont or not staying here in Glendora. So how that works, of course, is with artwork and hats off to staff, there's been a lot of great work in the chamber and the, the Business Improvement District in the village. The improvements there have been wonderful and exactly on point. That, that creates kind of a fun buzz and people want to be there. And then, you know, they might go for one restaurant and then they realize, oh, there's a great shop there. So, it's easier and we're fortunate to have a historic village. This is what fewer communities have, but they kind of concise urban, not urban, but kind of village core that you can take advantage of. But we, we have opportunities to maybe create versions of that somewhere else. So with public space requirements when private developers come, easements for a public access, and then the amenities between the benches, landscaping, lighting, there's all sorts of, you know, ways to pursue that, but it's an important thing to consider. Again, the, those bubbles on the left in the village, that was, I thought that was great. But on, on the right side of the slide, other cities' version of that, just to kind of add more whimsical spots. And for good or bad, people just love their selfies now and to give them a spot to do it is, is, is a thing. Another opportunity for placemaking that gets into the conversation of development. So, cities along the Light Rail corridor have, between Duarte, Monrovia, Laverne, Clermont, Pasadena, Arcadia, have, have seen the, not only the pressure from the state, but also if we're going to build something, where should it be? And if we build something, are we going to create something unique to our community? So this just shows a kind of a set of examples of what's happening nearby, of larger projects that are taking the effort to kind of plan for what else can attract consumers and make it a nice place to be. Now, I will be the first to admit that years ago, on working on projects that were anticipating the Light Rail station, and thinking, oh, we need ground floor retail everywhere, that's not the case. It, it has to be, you have to go through that exercise carefully, because the, the day-to-day users of Light Rail use that adjacent retail less frequently than you might think. Just worth an little extra consideration and lessons learned from other cities before you jump into too much of investment on a commercial side next to Light Rail. So now, we want to spend a little time on primary opportunity sites.
Eric?
Yeah.
Can you extend on that? Because we have some mixed-use proj, proj, projects here in town. How does that historically work on the mixed-use? Near Light Rail or just generally in the city compared to other cities? How's that worked out?
So, I think, in my experience, creating a place where housing and retail and rail users can kind of coexist and all kind of, it's kind of working together. There has been consistently strong demand for housing, because of the lack of housing we discussed. And it is the ability for those developers to build at a density that allows them to spend a little extra money on amenities, that is one element of it. So that, you know, in exchange for building so high and so many units, we are going to want amenities to benefit the residents of Glendora and the commuters. Then many of those same developers generally are housing developers that don't like to build commercial space. They're just usually two different types of investors. But many now will build retail if you make them. And some of them take, leasing that out in a very serious way and others almost throw it away, like, I had to build it because I had to build it. And it, they don't put the time and energy into thoughtful leases. But it's still, again, this is where lessons learned from other cities is important, because there are successful examples of it and I think failures. Monrovia, I admire a great deal for various things that they've done, but they built a restaurant pad right next to the Light Rail station. They spent a lot of money on it. They not leased it at all. And that's just unfortunately a glaring example of taking a risk kind of the wrong way. And it's something worth noting. So, again, this is leveraging the investment usually of a housing developer to bring you other benefits. One example I wanted to bring to you, and kind of aggressive urban planning that took place many years ago, thinking it's just going to be, you know, an answer to some of the retail needs that we have, but it, it doesn't solve for it. It can complement something that exists there now, but it won't be solving for a retail kind of challenge. That helps. Okay, so, primary, should I pause here before I jump into this or? So this is going to go more into now specific sites that, when I asked staff what we should spend a little time on, just for examples, have half a dozen here, just to kind of flip through and make note of. And this kind of goes in random order clockwise around the city, starting with A. So this is the vacant office building on the east side of town. The Portland Cement Group occupied, I think, most of the building. Another time, the NTD Architects was there, but now the majority of this building is vacant. It is in an attractive setting, albeit maybe of an isolated location, kind of away from amenities and the freeway. But it is in a legitimate cluster of other office buildings, which I think is a big plus. So, I, I'm, I'm hopeful that just having relatively low office vacancy rates, the building being in good condition, and there not being a lot of adjacent competition in Glendora, that the broker will be successful in finding somebody. But it's not like this is going to be a housing site, this is not going to be a retail site, this is not going to be an expansion site, in my book. So you just kind of hope that the professional owner is going to work with quality brokers to bring in a new tenant. But paying attention to, this is where staff does a good job, they have CoStar, which is the same set of kind of resources that different brokers have, understanding which large office tenants have leases coming due in, you know, reasonable radius, and which ones might need a little bit of a, kind of a care package sent from the city, that we would love to have them consider the site. This is something that I've done in the past, that just unannounced, sometimes you hear back from them in a grateful way and other times I think it's creepy, but, you know, you just kind of have to send something out of a blue to a potential tenant that supplements what the owner of the building is doing and supplements what the broker might be doing. Because, you know, they, they do that every day and, you know, there are people who might strong-arm or, what do you call it? Just ignore some of those professional real estate people because they hear from them too often. But it's a reach out from the city that is like, oh, that makes me feel good. So anyway, I, that's just one example, and I'll flip to the next one if we don't have any questions on this one. 431 East Arrow Highway, so this is the old Vaughn site. This is in, in an awkward spot now on Arrow Highway. I'm even, Big Lots closed down the street on the opposite, it's not in Glendora, but you, you see, you know, again, we said the national retailers like to cluster, they seem to be clustering away from more and more this section of Arrow Highway. So, and, and a lot of these pharmacies are struggling, so I don't know how much longer CBS is going to be there, I just don't know. But there's other, other vacancies on this property. Auto repair blocking, your kind of primary corner is always a problem for a retailer. So there are a few challenges here. Anyway, I don't know what the specific plan says or the zoning, but to me, if it hits a certain point and the property owner is willing to invest or collaborate with the developer, that includes housing, but you get a great kind of improvement to the street, that's something that at this, this site might be worth considering. I'll flip to the next one. Grand Avenue and Baseline. So, again, a center that is in, in bad shape, several vacancies. You have gas stations that are blocking the view of the retailers, that's, that's bad. You have non-retail across the street. You don't even get kind of the, the dueling corner effect of kind of providing a destination for retail. These all go to different challenges that the space is confronted with. One thought is that you take the, the, the best of the retailers and have them double down on the south side. Add your favorite tenant to the mix to really add some vitality. This is one of the few places in town that I could see maybe a hotel going. There's not a lot of DOT revenue coming to the city, but, you know, bringing visitors, bringing that amenity to the residents and the businesses in town might be worth consideration. That's just one idea. But the point is, is that maybe the, the center needs to kind of work around the gas stations, improve the, the vehicular ingress and egress, and the parking is a little bit awkward. Working with the owners of the gas station, not easy, but I'm not sure how else that Site D is a little bit of an interesting one, that is more of a theoretical site. Site D is a little bit of an interesting one. That is more of a theoretical site. And help me if I get this wrong, but behind Albertson's, adjacent to the future station, the authority, the Gold Line Authority, Line A, what are they called now? Anyway, whatever. Had to acquire more land than they needed for the parking, structured parking garage. And there's a remnant piece of land. So this is where we get into our shared dislike for the surplus land rules, which will be a problem here. But at the same time, it's a tremendous opportunity to now link the improvements of the light rail to something more of a kind of citywide kind of destination and connection to the current retail there. So, I'm not suggesting anything in particular, but it just is really worth time and energy to try and get that to go the right direction. Uphill climb, though.
And just to remind you on this site, this is, it's a site that was identified in the housing element as a housing site. And also, this and probably other locations will be the subject of the Metro Grant that we received to do some specific site planning around the future station.
Do you have what's, what's the amount of land south of where the parking facility is? Like acres? Is it one acre, two acres?
You mean south on Vermont?
You know, where the, says, where the Gold Line, you know, parking.
You know, the, I do not, it looks like ballparking, it looks to me like it's at least two acres.
Two acres.
Ballpark, very ballpark.
And I'm not sure about that existing building, but with the right group, there might be some more temporary use of that existing building. Oh, right now it has its back face to it.
And there's a door facing the Albertson's.
So there could be an intermediate type of improvement and then a longer term. Now, moving towards the eastern side of Route 66. This is just a site that's been vacant for a while. It is large enough to, if you wanted to build a 15,000 square foot standalone retail with parking, it could accommodate multiple units. But it's in a spot that it could bring some vitality to a part of the street. There's really no there there right now. But it's a combination, at least from catty corner essentially, other site that suffers from the same issue of there really aren't national retailers now that Tuesday Morning is pulled out. But in that strip between Glendora Avenue and Lone Hill, there really is not much. Poor site condition, awkward site shape, another gas station kind of blocking. I know it's all kind of owned by the same group now. It is an opportunity to do something unique. Again, I'm just pointing to the fact that there are few larger sites left over in Glendora to pay extra attention to, to create kind of something special. I'm not saying all of these have to be, but it just doesn't happen very often. So it's worth a little extra attention. I made point that it has access to the trails, which you never know what that might mean. Anyway, so that is a, it's a larger space that just having the redundant three to four, three, seven mile retailers might be satisfactory for Glendora or maybe it's something that you can aspire for, something a bit more unique for our community. Again, it's those larger sites that are worth considering. And I'm sure I'm going to get a hard time for this. But, so this is a wild, very large example that I just wanted to make note of. So, the Diamond Ridge and Marketplace, years ago, I think the city had a few stumbles, but ultimately had that built. And it provides great retail and great revenue for the city. And it was done to a large degree through an awkward process. I forgot exactly how, but between politics and the developers, that may not have been perfect. We got a development. But pretty much the same size, only slightly bigger, is Victoria Gardens. People don't think of that as the same size, but it really is close with that extra effort of creating a sense of place. I mean, they really wanted to make a part of Rancho Cucamonga. They had too many strip malls and they really wanted to make something special. And they kind of pushed that. So, not to even imply that we're ever going to get that again. We only have it now in two or three acre increments. But just a little bit of a kind of comment that sometimes a little unconventional thinking and maybe not acquiescing to exactly what the marketplace is suggesting right away is always the right thing to do. It's a little bit more of a back and forth with the investment community, what they're trying to achieve and what the city is trying to achieve. So, as far as tools, and I think I'm running out of time. Oh, I am out of time, sorry. This is the last slide. Leveraging zoning and specific regulations, restrictions, bonuses. You want to say no to certain things just as much as you want to say yes to things you like. Utilizing business associations, partnership, the chamber, those are all positive for creating the right type of environment in a city. I think you guys are doing a great job with that. And work to mitigate, this is my euphemistic phrase of the day, work to mitigate flat population stats. So whether that is new or if it is, you know, new number of people, if it is just creating a few projects that just bring more enthusiasm, that spark a retailer or a new business wanting to be part of it, I think is part of the required ingredients to success. And then collaborate with the property owners, the commercial brokers. I can't emphasize that enough because you just kind of have to have that ongoing conversation so that they feel they have advocates in City Hall, not just to tell them no or what they can't do, but that we're trying to work with them to improve their space. Grant awareness or aren't, this is your category, but there are not a lot of magic things out there, but it's always worth the time to pay attention. And then, marketing, I think is important, but also needs to be customized. Because retailers need different information than office tenants. And technology companies need something completely different than medical groups. You almost have to have like a menu of marketing material that you can assemble for whoever you're targeting. I personally, I'll raise my hand for a personal note, wouldn't spend too much time on trying to come up with a new catchphrase for Glendora. Tell me one catchphrase you remember from any of our nearby cities. It just kind of goes down the tube. But having a great website, being organized, making sure that things are cohesive is a big deal and worth kind of getting right. And information online. All right. I'll end with that little image of Glendora.
Good job. Boy, a lot of information. Anybody have any questions right now? So we're going to have an opportunity to extend this conversation. So at this point, we will break for lunch and be back here at 12:15. So eat quickly. Okay, let's reconvene back into session and get started with our next section. I believe, Alicia, you're going to be leading us on the panel discussion?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, it's all yours.
So as I think all of you should know, my name is Alicia Sunega and I assist Valerie in the city's housing and economic development efforts. So we're now going to go ahead and move into our panel discussion portion of the day. Brad Yumansky just walked in a short while ago, so I'll go and let him introduce himself.
My name is Brad Yumansky. I'm the owner and head coach of Progressive Real Estate Partners. We are a retail brokerage firm based in Rancho Cucamonga. We, most of our work is the leasing and sale of retail properties throughout the eastern San Gabriel Valley. I'd say about the 605 is where we, going east of the 605 all throughout the Inland Empire is where we do our work. We are a team of 12 brokers. We do more retail and lease transactions than any other retail, any other brokerage firm in that, in that area that I just described. And I have my dear friend Todd Launchba, who some of you might know, who is a guru of office and industrial. I think when you guys asked him to be on the panel and you said you wanted someone to talk about retail, he says, "I'm not the guy." And he called me. And so I said, because Todd asked, I said yes. And so I'm here to provide as much wisdom and insight as I can during our time together.
Appreciate it, Brad, and welcome.
Go ahead and get started. When we sat down to basically craft these questions, we really were trying to discern what economic development means in Glendora and staff's role and the city's role in really facilitating and driving that. So as you can imagine, we came up with a laundry list of questions. For the sake of time and the purpose of the workshop, we narrowed it down to eight. We are hoping to have an organic and free-flowing conversation, so we encourage everyone to, you know, jump in as they see fit. So I will go and start with the first question, which I'll direct to each of you. And again, like I mentioned, we're hoping to get a full encompassing look at what we're really looking at. So if you could all comment to the best of your ability, that would be great and much appreciated. So the first question is, would seem like a simple one, but I don't think it is. What are the qualities of cities that have success in economic development? I invite whoever to go ahead. Thanks, Brad.
Great, I'll start. In my experience, the clear communication is one of the biggest tools that a city can utilize to enhance economic development. And what I mean by that is having a planning staff, I'm having a city staff, a planning commission, and a city council that are all on the same page. The development community is always evaluating risk versus reward. And the entitlement process is the highest level of risk that's involved in the development process. And the ability to navigate within a city and know that the answer that you're getting at the staff level is the answer that you'll likely get at the planning level, which is the answer you'll get at council level if you end up going that far, is that they're generally in sync as a, as a community. I'm a big fan of a quick yes and a quick no is infinitely better than a really long maybe. That's just some, I'll start off with that one and we can go down and then come back with some more.
And I can tell you from a broad perspective of seeing what other cities do, one, being strategic. So, being really clear on what your competitive advantages and disadvantages are. So being honest with yourself, including the community, making sure that they do have a voice. It doesn't mean that you're going to do everything that every community member wants, but making sure they've at least had the chance to participate. And then knowing clearly what success looks like. I think that's a critical piece. Again, we see so many economic development strategies where there might be goals, but if you were to ask different people, they would tell you differently what they thought success looked like in implementing.
I agree with the things mentioned here, but I would just add to it that the general plan and zoning are important tools. And I think consistency to a vision is generally important from just the staff standpoint. I know from the outside world, it's maybe a different view. But just knowing that it's not in flux from a policy standpoint kind of helps with all range, range of things, including economic development. But when it comes to, because that's a kind of a broad vision. But having a little bit more of nimbleness at a staff level, kind of to kind of pursue ideas that might be more relevant in the current market situation, or if there's, you know, unexpected opportunity that bubbles up, to have that conversation with the right policymakers is still an important factor. It's just, it's kind of a weird balance. But you don't want the, the big picture shifting every 10 years. Makes it difficult from a permitting standpoint, which Brad mentioned, because there's always a lag from a zoning standpoint. But, yeah, economics change. So it's a weird balance. It's not easy, I think. Anyway, I would just add that to just pose the question of where's the right balance?
And I did want to jump in really quick. I don't think I mentioned at the beginning, we did, staff went ahead and got these questions based off of what we've seen and what we've heard. And we did reach out to council and solicited any concerns or questions you may have during the panel discussion. If there are any follow-up questions or clarifying questions that you might want to ask, please feel free to do so, like I said, as you, as you see fit. Into our next question, like many cities in LA County, Glendora is a built-out community, which poses a number of challenges, as we, we've heard earlier. In particular, aged buildings, longstanding property owners, and small parcels. How can the city promote economic development at and around these sites?
We're just going to start here and work our way down, maybe. I don't know. We'll see how this game works. So, the, and it is a challenge, right? Because you have, you have some incredibly excellent projects and then you have the challenge of many of the, of the communities in this area where you have areas that have lots of small parcels that were, that were chopped up. I would, I would say that zoning is probably one of the most powerful tools, and I think this is what Eric was saying, one of the most powerful tools. And, you know, it pains me as somebody who is trying to, you know, bring business to different places and, you know, obviously a lot of times just to, you know, the path of least resistance is always pleasant. The ability to, one of the things I had heard was that, like, we have, that Glendora has a lot of automotive uses. And like, how do we not have as many automotive uses? Well, one of the ways you not, I don't have as many automotive uses is you change the zoning so that you can't have as many automotive uses when those leases expire or when those spaces vacate. Now, you'll probably get, it'll be very upsetting to some of those people. But if the goal is to have those change into little restaurants or little cafes or little, you know, then that's one of the ways, one of the ways you do it. I, I'm going to say it now just because I want to make sure I don't forget is, is the, even though I'm a retail guy, the first thing I think of these days whenever I look at a retail site is what else can it be? We have plenty of retail. We have too much retail. And one of the things as a community that you can do to strengthen your community is to figure out where are those opportunities where you can have small lot residential development, where you can do those eight or 12 or 16 units that are done in a nice fashion. That is, you know, when you, Eric, when you talked about growth, I mean, that's where your opportunity probably is for residential growth, is densification. And how the community feels about that is, but is this why you guys are the volunteers and not me? But, you know, I personally like it. But I think that's one of the things to really look at is, is where are those opportunities? And then using zoning, and then using some level of even communication amongst property owners potentially to say, "Hey, do you guys realize that if you put your three properties together, if they're a lot more valuable than individually, and we as the city are willing, you know, we're not, we're not just telling you then we're stepping back. We are willing to help promote." And maybe as families realize that there's an opportunity to, to get something much better than what they're currently getting by putting their heads together, you can effectively help assemble property, which you're not really able to do anymore. But as a way of trying, trying at least, and it's hard because every family has their own dynamics and, you know, there's all sorts of tax issues involved. But those are just some thoughts.
Often, family members that aren't getting along and don't want to talk to each other. And you see space that technically is not vacant. It's, it's being used, but minimally because the family can't make a decision on how to just take the next step. That happens way more times than it should. But that, anyway, it's unfortunately just a reality that is so hard to get past.
I would only add to that, the same thing I've been saying since the start, is like, know what you want it to look like. Have that vision ahead of time instead of just going in and saying, "Oh, we have a few of these sites that we'd like to make prettier." I mean, it should be part of a more strategic, thoughtful plan. So is your, your strategic in how you're addressing each one of those goals that you're trying to achieve? Because maybe you don't want to put housing in some of those areas. The sites that you showed, it seemed like each one of them might have a separate strategy to address it. So, being clear on what you want it to look like and what your intention is going in, I think really is what drives what your next steps are.
I don't think it was mentioned in your question, but we were just talking about the ORMC. the Oremco site, I'm probably saying it wrong, but on Lone Hill. And how that just south of the new car wash is a vacant property that is, and when I say opportunity sites, I may not have clarified in the presentation, but it, it could be a larger site of a couple acres. It could be just a small but very visible site that's at a great intersection or corner. It might just be available or you just know it's going to be available in the future. That becomes a great opportunity to kind of change the dynamic at an intersection. So it takes all different kind of flavors. It's not always a big site, but the Oremco site is a big site. But it's owned industrial. And when we talk about, I'm looking at the city logo here, industry is the top one. That's one of the very few industrial sites left in the city. There'll be a few others, but that's one of the few that comes to mind that is available. Again, from a city kind of parochial standpoint, you may want to have it changed to something more fun and unique. But regionally, those, those types of industrial spaces are hard to come by. And, you know, the LA EDC and all their reports that they come up with, they, they has, have as a caution that too many cities often do flip to housing in, at the expense of industrial and how LA as a whole has to be careful. It's just a tough challenge. And, you know, along the fringes, industrial uses are just becoming so weak and they might as well turn to something else. But that's just one site that comes to mind. You mentioned that in the presentation. But, you know, the types of jobs that were there, that could be there. Worth considering to kind of keep it industrial. So anyway.
I've got a question because we, we talk about, there's all kinds of incentives to merge properties together for residential that include higher density. Any ideas or suggestions about how to figure out ways to get property owners to work together to merge sites? Because you're right, they are more valuable together, but unfortunately, so few landowners don't realize that. And I'm not quite sure how to get that word out.
Part of it is, with extremely high certainty, they don't know who, they don't even know who their neighbor is. Because if I'm a family member who lives in Irvine or West LA or wherever I might be, and I, you know, I inherited this little property from my dad, you know, that I'm collecting rent from, from the single user, it probably doesn't even dawn on me to, to find out who owns the adjacent property. Or so I think, you know, and you guys probably have, and even though it's really hard to find property owners, we spend an awful lot of time and effort finding, it's easy to find the ownership entity. It's really hard to find a name and phone number or an email address for someone who actually makes a decision. But since you guys are in it for the long haul, I mean, having, having one of the best, better databases of property owners would probably be well worth your interest. It's not necessarily worth a broker's interest to dig that deep. At some point, you just say, I give up and move on. But clearly a city having a, a really deep knowledge of who their property owners are and somehow then communicating with them. And obviously you can always send them a letter, you know. But, but and then the, the flip side to the question, which is understanding property values today has never been more difficult. It is so hard to know whether a piece of property, so for example, a two acre piece of land that you could build residential on might be worth a lot less on a per square foot basis than a five acre piece, because all of a sudden residential, you get such economies of scale. But the exact reverse is true for retail. A five acre retail site is really hard these days to develop. But a two acre site that where you can do a fast food and a, and you know, a little restaurant, something like that, all of a sudden that's much more valuable. And so understanding in which cases land is, you know, most valuable, in which cases it's not is, and then I think you were, you guys were talking about industrial and industrial takes the cake these days because it seems like if you can assemble a large industrial piece of land, it is by far more valuable than anything else. But the ability to find that in this community is mostly slim to none unless you chop down a mountainside or something, which I'm sure there's developers out there trying to figure it out.
To build on the mayor's question and Brad's comment, one thing that I've been involved with in the past is that we would, from an economic development standpoint, we would invite three or four blocks worth of commercial property owners together for a breakfast. And we would do this, maybe, again, Pasadena was big enough at the time, but we would invite all the architects in town for a breakfast. We'd do all the lawyers, believe it or not. We'd do that, engineers. So we would kind of batch people that had like interests, but we'd do it geographically from time to time, too. And old, like, so Old Pasadena was a formalized business improvement district. So years ago that happened and it turned into a, a formal association and then a bid. Same with the Playhouse District, same with South Lake. But there were plenty of streets, East Washington, East Colorado, the East Pasadena area that didn't have any formal kind of association or connection. So we, we did that from time to time, hoping that they would start talking to each other. And in East Pasadena in particular, it, it had success with two or three projects that the property owners ended up meeting each other and just kind of holding hands on a deal. It didn't impact their partnership greatly, but it was a reciprocal easement agreement for access. It was dealing with a wall issue. It seemed simple, but it suddenly now, instead of being isolated, there's a little bit more coordination. And the point is inviting property owners that probably have never met each other to try and get them to, to socialize that. You know, you can, we use the premise of here, learn about the city, here's, here are the projects that are going on. That's kind of a carrot to get them to attend. And then the whole, the kind of the supplemental hope is to have them just get to know each other and collaborate a little bit more.
Appreciate that. Thanks.
Some of the challenges that I've noticed is that some of these small parcels that we have in and around the city are owned by some older folks and they're using it as retirement income. And so if they were to sell out, they're going to pay their capital gains tax and then they're not going to have that income rolling in all the time. Are there any other vehicles out there that can entice them or help them without a 1031 exchange to get them to move that property and get it developed?
Okay, so why did you say without a 1031 exchange?
Well, because a lot of these folks just don't want to do that. They just, they did, they're happy, they're content with what they're doing. They don't want to change anything. They're fine with the income they're getting. They don't want to go in to get something else and create an issue for themselves.
So for those who don't know, a 1031 exchange is basically an opportunity to sell your property and buy something else, tax-deferred. Eventually you pay the taxes unless, until someone dies and then you may not have to pay the taxes. But if they're not willing to do that, then I'm not aware of any other, any other vehicles. And I think the, showing somebody, showing somebody how the return that they're getting on the rent that's coming in from the existing user, this is especially true for a situation where you're trying to encourage them to sell their, their automotive building where they have a tenant in there on a month-to-month lease that's been there for 30 years. And there, and if you could show them that the value of their property with the way that it's currently is a million, but if it's as a piece of land, it's worth two and a half million. And therefore the rent that they're getting from the existing tenant is so low compared to that two and a half million dollars of value. Therefore, if they do a, an exchange, they'll end up way ahead of it. And you're right, it's work. And so the question is, how do you entice them to do work? And sometimes the only way, sometimes if you help. And it's hard because you're not, you know, I'm not a tax guy, you know, everybody, they're all situations. But trying to at least maybe share some information with them that, that, or have even somebody within the community who is a tax person, you know, speak to them that one of these ideas that you just said, Eric, where you bring, where you invite people to come in could be helpful. I, just an idea, but I like the way you're thinking.
Thank you.
Before we move on, did anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, I'll ask. It intrigues me how landlords can let something sit vacant for year after year. Apparently they're into it so easily that the vacancy doesn't impact their bottom line? Or do they make it up in volume because they may own many more properties than we realize? Do the incentive?
No, I always, I always like to say, there's always a story behind every single piece of real estate. And, and a lot of times that property is sitting there because there's a dispute within the family. A lot of times it's sitting there because there's an environmental problem that needs to be cleaned up and it's going to cost a million dollars to clean up the environmental problem, but nobody has the million dollars and nobody wants to deal with it. And so one of the things as a, as a city, if you see a situation like that, maybe, maybe reaching out and, and, and say, well, we would love to have that building occupied, but there's clearly got to be a story behind what's happening here with your, with your partnership, with your family. And letting them tell you, and they may or may not tell you that story, because they're going to be, they're going to want to hold their cards pretty close to the vest because you are in some ways the enemy. You can also, you, let me rephrase that. You could turn out to be the enemy. And so they're going to hold their cards because they're always wondering, what's your ulterior motive? And sometimes you do have a very much an ulterior motive. And sometimes your ulterior motive may very well be very positive for them, but they don't see it yet. And so building, working to build up that trust, it's kind of what we do as brokers a lot of times, because when we make some of these calls, they're like, well, what do you want? Like what's, you know, we know, they're, they're questioning us. So, but there's usually a story by something sitting vacant. And I would encourage you guys to try to find out what that story is.
If I've heard this once, I've heard it a thousand times. When something is sold downtown, friends, people that I don't even know, say one of two things. Well, I hope it's not a real estate office, or I hope it's not a nail salon. Now, if nobody has heard that, then you must be living in a cave, because I think we've all heard that. So Brad said that we can control that by zoning codes. And I've been on here for eight years. I'm a rookie compared to Karen. But if we can control that by that, then why don't we control that? One of our historic buildings was allegedly just sold to a real estate firm. Now, I don't know if, if they just bought it and they're going to put something else in there. I don't know. But it saddens me that there's 11 real estate loan companies downtown. No offense to my, to my good friend here, Gary. And surprisingly, there's only four nail spots downtown. Yesterday, my wife and I were cruising up and down the street. I, probably people that saw us thought we were really old people that were extremely bored and we had nothing else to do. But that's what we were doing. We were counting. And looking for peacocks. And I would like to, to, to know where Eric stands on the peacocks, since Arcadia was a employer of his back in the day. But that's a discussion for after, after three o'clock. But honestly, so if zoning is, is the way to control things, then I think the question that I have that is paramount to what we're talking about here is, do we have the kind of zoning codes that will allow us to bring in the things that we all want and that our citizens claim that they want? And, and, and also say no to the things that we don't want. Not that we don't want them, but we have enough of them. And I guess that's a question that I have. So Adam-
So to, to use your own words, if you've heard it once, you've heard it a thousand times, it's not that simple. So-
Well, I'm sure that that's true, but that's why I guess we're here to talk about this.
In all honesty, it's a great question. Picking and choosing various parcels with different zoning requirements is difficult. You can't just issue a moratorium and stop businesses. There are certain protocols in place. You mentioned you're, you're located in Rancho. They had a moratorium on car washes for a while, but they allowed them again with certain various changes. In your strategic plan and what you've already approved is some of the start of a lot of our planning documents that talk about those types of businesses. So it's not an overnight change, something that can go into it. But Jeff, do you mind talking a little bit about the general plan and some of these other larger policy land use items?
Sure. I think, you know, the council knows that we've embarked, we've just completed the housing element of the general plan and we've embarked on updating other elements. You know, what really resonates with me, and this is where the heavy lifting on the part of the council goes, is that you want to have in order to, whenever a business or a developer, any type of investor comes to, comes to the city, you want staff, the planning commission and the council to all be on the same page. You know, you don't want us telling something different than, than the council member. They go to council members, say, well, I don't agree. I want X, Y, or Z. And it all starts with creating, you know, your vision for the future of the community. The general plan's going to be a real opportunity to do that. We haven't really done that as a community for coming up on 20 years. So that, but those are tough questions. You know, you have to, you're going to make some people happy. You're going to make some people upset. But I think the important thing, when you do decide whatever the community's vision is for the future going forward, that, you know, you, you stick to it, at least for a decade or two. It would be even better because it is true that these things, they, they take a long time. Once you decide a direction to go, a vision for the community, you know, it takes, you really have to stick to it for 10 to 20 years to see it to fruition. And I think the communities that have done that and been able to stick with it, they're the ones who've succeeded and at the end of the day gotten what they wanted, even if along the way they were, they had to run into some, you know, so, you know, some, whoever in, who lives in the community, whatever group is not happy, you know, for whatever reason. But, you know, it's too tall, there's not enough parking, there's too much traffic. It's going to change, you know, all the things I love about quaint Glendora, all the, all of those things you have to be willing to, to deal with.
There are cities that will designate a certain, of course, there's various zoning flavors, but general commercial or, you know, you name it. But certain cities have in their downtown only allowed pedestrian-friendly uses. They say that because they want to make sure that, that, that district retains a retail nature, that people are going there to shop. And to your point, is that if there are too many just offices in general or, you know, I mean, that nails are on the fence as far as whether people go there for shopping or not. But you can kind of customize it so that you're basically eliminating ones that are not supporting it as a retail destination. And only allow those on the second floor or even in the back. But the frontage has to be a certain kind of dynamic that is supporting retail. So cities do that. It's, it's not easy getting it the code, but it does happen. And so it, it's kind of unfair to do it through too much of the city. It has to kind of really be, I mean, the village would be one great example of where that would probably work. But it takes some political finesse to draw that line of what's considered pedestrian-friendly and kind of supportive of retail. But it has been done.
And even with not allowing automotive uses and other kind of on the other end of the kind of commercial, where they will start to not allow the, the land uses that are a bit more industrial and have bigger impact, that those are not going to be allowed in traditional commercial areas. Or you can pick a street where it's not allowed. But that, that does happen.
And that discussion has come up before. And when it reached the level of the council, as that discussion happened, some of those property owners in the village pushed back and said, hey, are you going to try to tell me what I can do with my building? And then there wasn't intestinal fortitude to continue with that conversation. So I think that that's where we as a city council and as the planning commission need to have those conversations together if you do want to have those kind of zoning.
I'll also add, we spend a lot of time talking about the things that we don't like because those are easy to spot. We also need to think about what it is that we do want and what are we willing to do to bring them here, which is kind of the more difficult conversation. Because oftentimes, you, I mean, you've heard us talk about, you know, changes to the Route 66 Pacific Plan that added, that allowed for some law consolidation bonuses or concessions when it came to development standards. We have to think about that in similar form to non-residential uses. So parking limitations, we, we do minimums. Maybe we talk about maximums. Maybe we, you know, give them a 25%, you know, a bonus or something if, if they're able to, if it's the type of business that we want to attract it in a, in a different location. So zoning oftentimes is characterized as very punitive because it does limit what you can and can't do. Maybe we need to start thinking about- Uh, maybe we need to start thinking about using zoning as more of a, a reward to those types of businesses that we want to see in, in particular locations. Adding, you know, to what Eric mentioned, we also have to be very careful that we're very specific about what we're talking about because while, you know, no more nail salons in the village might be the sentiment of the day, doesn't mean that we want to include that in our zoning code to prohibit them in other places in our community where they very well may be thriving or stand an opportunity to thrive. And so we have to be a lot more surgical about what we're talking about, where we're talking about it and what we're talking about.
True, and, and I, and I agree with that. The second point on our, um, the survey is improve dining and shopping. And I know that, that sometimes we get kind of myopic on, on just the couple of blocks north of us, right? And we got to think about 20 square, square miles and what encompasses that. And so I think we're all here to try to do that. But, um, I think we also need to, you know, be here to try to achieve some of these things that our public is saying. And dining and shopping are, was number two. And I think that we need from either a zoning or however you guys kind of work the Ouija board here and be able to say, there's a balance, you know? And that's all I'm, I guess I'm after. Gary, you were.
Yeah, I just have to give another perspective because one of the things I'm always concerned about is private property rights.
Right.
You know, you find yourself in a situation that California is dictating to us what we have to do and then is it our job to dictate to people what they can do with their properties? One of the things that happens on a regular basis is cities will do rezoning that dramatically affects the value of properties. We have seen it go both ways here in town where we've rezoned properties that have increased the value of a particular property tenfold and other times we've cut the value of the property in half just by doing some zoning. And so it, it's a fine line that, that we have to walk. Um, it, it's sort of like the political atmosphere. Uh, it, it's up to the residents. If the residents were supporting retailers in the village, the village would be filled with retailers. And I think that's more of a question that we have to have. If that's what we want, why don't we have it? Because if all of the retailers, all of the restaurants in town had lines out the doors, there would be more restaurants clamoring to come to town. And so it, it's a bigger picture, but for me, trampling on people's private property rights is, is really concerning. Different, um, different perspective.
Same of challenges, we will continue to the next, which I think Eric mentioned earlier in his presentation about the stagnant or otherwise declining population in Glendora. And I think many cities throughout the San Gabriel Valley are experiencing this. Um, how is this affecting Glendora's retail trade area and what are the advantages and disadvantages of those effects? And I'll direct that one to Brad.
Okay. So I don't think that, um, we're seeing any impacts at this stage of the game from any sort of, from the stagnant, because I think there's a relative balance, although for every little bit of retail space that goes away, it's just going to strengthen the rest of it. But I think the, the other important thing to remember is that the, it's a retailer, retail demand is a, is a mathematical equation that has two components to it, population, but then also income. And so if you can figure out ways to entice hi- higher income residents, which might be through, you know, once again, nice, um, you know, some, wherever form of nice housing that you establish, um, then that is another way of working the, you know, working that, that math. And I think when you look at some of the demographic data, even though population isn't going up very much, incomes are going up, uh, which is, I think what's really been fueling a lot of the positive retail growth over the course of the last couple of years, or at least retail strength in the last couple of years is, there's been a lot of dollars circulating the world in, in the last couple of years. And whether that's going to continue or not, I think one of the things we're definitely starting to see, when I, I read a lot of news about retail and we are clearly seeing the, you know, profits going down, sales going down amongst a, a broad spectrum of the retail marketplace. And so I think we are going to start to see some winners and losers, but it's not, it's not Glendora reflective, it's overall, overall economy reflective. But in terms of your own community, as much as you can strengthen the total dollars in the community, both by population and by attracting people of good incomes, um, that will help.
Brad, I have a follow-up question. So often, you know, the, the data that we have at our disposal is basic, for lack of a better way, unless we pay specialized consultants to give us a higher level of data. Are there data points that retailers, from your experience, is, or is there a data point beyond people and money, um, that they're looking at, um, that can help rebalance that equation, given some of the challenges that we're facing? Is it vehicle counts? Is it, is it places for experience? Is it really having parking, you know, within a certain amount of distance to their property? You know, what, what other things can we do to better tell that story?
So, um, that's a, that's an okay question. So, okay, and it goes in a couple of different directions. Um, on one hand, you'd be amazed at the number of operators, for lack of, instead of calling them retailers, restaurateurs, service businesses, you'd be amazed at the number of them that have almost no science behind their site location, other than they look at a site and they go, well, that kind of feels like another site that we have and we do really well over there. So there's that side of the equation. Then there are some of the national retailers that you couldn't even touch the level of sophistication that they have and you can send them every piece of information that you think that you have that would be valuable and they'll basically go, don't even bother because we have our own complex analytical program that tells us exactly how many sales we're going to, we're going to kick out. But the two things that I would say that are most helpful, and I know you have to be very careful in how you present this information because you're not allowed to provide individual sales on an individual operator. Um, I have seen cities where they'll say, well, I can't give you this, but I can tell you that the combination of these three at this intersection, is it six now? Whatever the number, whatever the number is, well, it used to be three, but then they realized that some of us knew how to do solving three equations, you know, solving three variables. And so they must've had to go to six. But even in the aggregate, because that's what they're, that's what they're always interested in. One of the really cool tools that the whole industry is shifting to right now is mobile, is called mobile analytics. And, um, you guys may have been solicited by Placer AI, there's a couple of others named Sites, you know, SiteSeer and AlphaMap and a few others. Um, and I'm a fan of SiteSeer at this stage of the game. But we are all being tracked. Um, everything you do with your phone is you're being tracked now. So they don't know that, they don't know that, you know, Mayor Boyer, that, that you went into Ace Hardware necessarily. They just know that somebody, you know, with your, um, whatever the codes are within the phone went in. And so there's a lot more looking at, at mobile analytics because those will allow you to establish really true trade areas versus, you know, the trade areas that you were showing earlier today are very much what most of us do. And what it allows you sometimes to do is to convince a certain user that, well, you say you have a location over in Azusa, but none of those people that are going to your store on the south side of the 210 freeway in Azusa are ever coming to our, you know, there, our people aren't shopping there because you can look at, and so that's some of the data that's, that's out there. But they do, parking is critical, all of those different components are, make, make a lot of sense, but knowing your, you know, really knowing your community and knowing as much as you can is, is very helpful.
Next question, um, I think this is more prevalent now with the effects of COVID and, and what that looks like now. Um, but let's talk about office space. Uh, with the demand for office space declining, how do you address large-scale office vacancies? That one maybe to Eric.
Yeah, I, I tried to cover at least portions of it in the presentation and that one chart that identified the fact that, uh, larger office, larger office buildings had a higher vacancy rate than the smaller ones. So, and, um, which tells the story of the one on Financial Way. So that is larger than 50,000 square feet and those are proving to be the more, more difficult. So yeah, I ultimately, uh, I think where tools that the city has access to through CoStar, um, it just requires being a little bit more of an investigator on looking regionally at which tenants might fit that space and who you can reach out to, to supplement the brokers. Brokers are often, you know, some are more cooperative than others. Some feel like.
Some are better than others.
If you tell the, if you tell the city what is even a consideration, that somehow the city is going to share that with a competing building and, you know, that, so that, you almost have to go on your separate track as a economic development professional and just start reaching out to a handful of those that you feel like might, um, fit that vacancy. So, I mean, Glendora right now is fortunate, there aren't many office vacancies. Um, so, but that's the big one. And it'd be worthwhile to put some effort trying to at least, you know, shoot for the stars on a few tenants that might make a difference because you can, you can get a, you know, a tenant in there that's not going to make any difference, it's not going to show up on any list, it's going to be boring, or you can get a group that is more of a star and sparkle and add some vitality to that, that one street. So, I mean, it's where it's worth at least giving it a shot, but it's still, it's not an easy exercise. But I would say, um, don't even try six months, but ones that are, um, ending in 12 to 24 months, um, tenants that are about that size in a, um, five, six mile radius, getting some love from the city is probably a helpful thing.
Even 10 miles and even, and I would look at bigger, I would look at tenants that are in bigger space that may very well want to downsize.
The ones that want to shrink into that 50,000.
But it is amazing how we all read on the news how terrible the office market is and then you think that that, all of these buildings, because I, might very well be vacant. Um, and it turns out that, that I was at a, one of, an economic, not an economic development, I was at a commercial real estate forum where somebody from the office market was speaking and I'm a, as I told you, I'm a retail guy and I was shocked. The inland empire is the number one office, has I think the lowest vacancy rate in the country in office and Glendora is an extension of that because we also, because we aren't having to take public transportation, we're able to, you know, be in our cars, our, the office space is a little bit more comfortable, you're not going up, you know, 20-story elevators. And so in reality, but I think one of the things you might observe, and this is something that's probably worth doing is driving around, is just look at how much of this, the parking lots are actually filled or not filled because, you know, one of the things I think we're all experiencing is, you know, there's, we have half the number of people working out of our office today as we did, but I still, I'm still going to keep the entire office. And I think there's a lot of that going on right now because we just don't know. And it's easier to not go than it is to start moving around.
Question that I had, and I don't know if this is a real trend or just perceived, when I first came to Glendora, there were two Wells Fargos, it ballooned to four, now we're back down to one. So there's an empty Wells Fargo building now at a great corner, but, you know, trying to convert a bank building into something else, you know, people say, oh, make it a restaurant. Well, you know, we all know in LA County to try to take something like that and turn it into a restaurant is craziness. So any trends in that area of what can happen to these, because I see more banks probably closing branches. And so what happens to these old bank buildings?
A lot of them will get knocked down, um, and turned into some sort of other freestanding type use. Some of them will get re-tenanted, like the one up in front of the Von Center, um, which I think now is a, does anyone know what it is now? Is it a?
Dentistry office.
Yeah, and, and, um, which is, you know, an example of how that gets, got re-tenanted. Um, some, you know, you might be fortunate to turn it into a restaurant. They're all going to go through their own iteration, but you are 100% correct in observing that there are going to be fewer and fewer bank branches and they are closing on a, on a pretty regular basis all throughout the, the country.
So you hit on one comment that, um, is worth expanding on. So in many cities, um, they allow for retail in a commercial strip mall, but they don't allow for medical because it has usually different parking requirements. Um, but there are other, um, kind of more flexible models that I think are seeing success. Uh, the dentist's office is one example, but there are other different healthcare groups that they themselves are shifting strategy instead of being in a larger medical building. They want to be closer to their customers and a few of them are going into retail centers. And it is a, a trend worth considering. I mean, it brings people there, it's active, it may not be the perfect target, but I think it's appropriate for a consideration in certain, certain parts of the city that I'm not even sure if, if medical is allowed by right in some of the, it is, okay. Many cities don't have that, so that's good. That's a leg.
Because we're, we're progressive.
Yeah.
I don't think that's why we're here.
We, we don't go around counting parking spaces every time a new business moves into retail. And I, and I say that kind of tongue in cheek, but I know what you're talking about. Usually I think planning organizations function, I mean, we're basically like an HOA managing people's parking and like how green their grass is and how tall their fences are and things like that. But we, we decided not to do that because we saw a lot of, um, retail centers that were, uh, really starting to decline. In fact, um, I'd say the Grand Promenade, as soon as it was remodeled about 15 years ago, they had trouble filling spaces and some of their major anticipated tenants, uh, decided not to go into the center. And then you had a, I think healthcare partners showed up and, you know, wanted to go in there and fill one of the more larger spaces and I, not that, you know, that's, it's, center still has issues, but that is one of the ways you can, you know, keep centers as viable commercial areas by allowing a wider variety of uses than what I think traditionally is thought of as, uh, as a grocery store anchored center.
I think that's fantastic. I, I've always said I'd rather have a parking problem than a vacant parking lot. Take your, you know, better to take the chance, the free, the market will adjust because if a center doesn't have enough parking in it, then uses that require a lot of parking won't go in and so it'll kind of adjust. And so I, I love the fact that you guys do that.
Earlier, uh, we mentioned that Glendora is a bedroom community comprised of primarily single-family homes. So how does additional housing inventory encourage business interest? That one to Gerbaks.
Sure. So you've heard a lot from both of these gentlemen, the, the need for population or for retail, but I would say, you know, thinking back or thinking forward as to what your community is going to look like in five or 10 years, are you going to have an aging population because your young people can't stay here or buy homes? Are you going to have a workforce for these new businesses that you want to attract? I mean, I think it's at the heart of what you want to do or what you want to look like in five or 10 years because, I mean, you'd said you're not going to use the word stagnation. I will use that word because at some point, if your population's not growing, you don't have the workforce, you are aging out, what happens to Glendora? It's a big strategy there.
So a few other cities that I, I know have been confronted with the same political challenge and the kind of reality of, um, aging out. And I'm part of the problem, right? I have two, two boys and, um, we at the time, for years, had to spend lots of money on raising kids and, um, we're fortunate, we still have that house and our, but our day-to-day spending is diminished significantly. Um, we're frugal, but the whole point is we don't have to. And there's so many people in Glendora and so many people in, in California that are in the same boat. And, um, if it is, if there's too much of that population dictating the retail kind of direction, that is a bad thing. So it's really kind of providing some additional, um, diversity in the kind of age group so that you're getting people spending money on strollers and soccer shoes and other things, not just, um, pickleball paddles. Anyway, but yeah, I, I just, I guess I'd add that. And, and other cities have also just kind of framed the, um, the challenge, again, the political challenge of something new of, listen, we, we are zoning the city to protect the single-family neighborhoods and we are choosing to allow for our needed growth along just certain corridors. So you kind of put it in a defensive format that you are there to really protect, um, you know, again, it's probably 80% of Glendora is a single-family neighborhoods, that your, your zoning decisions and development decisions are there to protect those zones, which are really, are not going to change anyway. Those boundaries are well-established, but you're, you're focusing the newness of the city in just specific parts of town. It's just, again, it's a little spin, but it's, it's the truth. All in there.
With, with all the question about housing and business, what do you do first? What is like a field of dreams thing, they'll build it, they will come? Or I mean, in, in other areas, I mean, what, what do cities do? Or I mean, in, in other areas, I mean, what, what do cities do?
Any place where you can build housing at an economical, where the developer can make it economically work, they will come, but I can guarantee you that if you just build a bunch of retail buildings, they will, they may not come.
Brad, if you don't mind, Brad, you mentioned that we are over-retailed. Could you just provide us some context and examples of that? Because I know you see it day to day, but it's hard to kind of frame it.
So, so the average per square feet of retail per person in the United States is about 20 square, 24 square feet of retail, 24 square feet of retail. I did my own custom trade area of kind of the Azusa, Glendora, San Dimas, Laverne, Covina trade area. And I came up with a number that was in excess of 50 square feet per individual, which I was really surprised by because, and my guess is that, that that was very much driven by, you know, the, the need for sales tax dollars and the fact that eminent domain exists, existed during the growth stage of these, these cities versus as you go further east, even though the numbers are still high, they're in the mid to high 30s. I was surprised that they're as high as they are right now, so that's, that's the context. And no, I didn't, I didn't pay him to set me up for that.
No, I think that it's a reflection of years and years of all cities' economic development strategies leaning more on sales tax. It's just, it was natural, but it just means that each city is now slightly disproportionate to the, the need of the community and now we're kind of stuck with it.
And I want to clarify something Eric said earlier, which he said you were very diplomatic about how you approached, when you're doing mixed use and you put retail under residential, how a lot of the developers don't want to do it, but the part that I'll add is that most of them don't know how to do it. It's one of the most complicated issues are in our industry right now because of this push towards densification and the idea of putting retail underneath residential because it, so many times it doesn't work because people don't account for parking, they don't account for where trash is going to go, where, where, how are you going to ventilate the first floor spaces so that you can put restaurants in? How are you going to handle the common area charges, you know, divide them up amongst everybody? And you, this kind of issue goes on and on and so it's, so in reality, you would, you would make a residential developer breathe a sigh of relief if you didn't push it. And it's got to be really strategically done to make sure that there's a way to, that the site logically lays out if you do encourage it.
And I would just add that based on the conversations we've had, as sites become available, we hear exactly that. And I would add so far as it's not even a, they'll do it if you ask them to, it's a no, we don't, we're not going to do that. So it was even more of a harder no. As money's gotten tighter and tighter, I think there's less, there's less wiggle room and it's been a hard no, we're not going to build any retail, it's not what we do.
Can I add to that real quick? I know this is meant to have a retail focus, but I feel like I need to say really clearly, economic development is more than retail attraction and retention. I think you guys know that the business makeup of your community isn't just retail, so being mindful of that and Jeff's point that there hasn't been a visioning session or engagement with the community in that process in like 20 years, you said was the last one or?
Probably the last time we updated the general plan was 2000, really between 2003 and 2006, we did a lot of that, but not since then.
So it seems like some of this, like you need that information and that input before you can go down a path of what do we do with this site, what should we do with this specific zoning requirement? I see, I'm trying to hide my nails, because I'm like, I can get my nails done, but. Well, so I'm a fan of nail shops, I'll say it, but that said, you know, it has to be part of that larger vision of what you're trying to accomplish. And when you say is it business or residential, practically speaking, from an economic development perspective, especially as a local government, if your entire community is primarily housing as a city, do you have enough money generated then to cover the cost of providing all the services that they would require? There's got to be some balance there. And I heard so many of you say balance when you were talking about your priorities for economic development, but it's got to be broader than retail. And I think you guys know that. I know that we're talking about it in this context primarily focused on retail, but.
Just, please finish.
I like my nails.
There you go.
Just not in the village.
Yeah. I just, one question and sort of to ask it upfront and sort of talk about why is, the city council, as you've heard today, has a lot of policy discussions and decisions they have to make and in the very near future. And so the advice you provided today is clear and concise, a communication to the public, providing some context, not a bunch of detail that's out there on what's going on and to have a clear plan to define what it is that you want, not, not necessarily what you don't want. I'll add to that, the streamlining of permitting and this thought process that staff, planning commission and city council are generally on the same page. And I will tell you, that's not always been the case here. Some people like that that's not the case, they feel like there's public debate about that. And other times, as on the development side, we catch a lot of flak because they're like, wow, that was a waste of time. So is there a piece of advice you would give the council as they go about this process? Yes, we're going to create an economic development, a strategic plan, and yes, we're talking about economic development, but as they deal with these big, difficult topics, just from your professional perspective, is there something they should keep in mind when going through this process?
Be honest with yourselves as you're looking at the data. It's really easy when you, especially when you're listening to the community feedback, even with those outliers that might come back with, I don't want to call them Miranda, but maybe extreme responses to questions you've asked, make sure those are taken into account, people feel heard. You know, so much of it is the communications piece, as much as it is what your end product and strategy looks like and then implementation, making, we're hearing this so much in economic development, making sure people feel like they've been heard and their, their thoughts and what they want for the vision of the community is being incorporated. Being honest with yourself and then being transparent in the communication, even if it's putting it on a website saying, this is the strategy based on the input that we got, these are the phases that we're at. I mean, I, I'm always a fan of the more that you have out there that's accurate and objective information, you know, the easier it is for you all to move forward. Because I can't imagine what it's like being in your seat, especially knowing that your neighbors will come visit you and, and talk about, you know, what they want to see in the community. But when you have that clear data and you're really transparent and clear with the community, at least everybody is clear on why you're moving forward and what you're doing. There's not this, oh, you know, we can't trust them. So making sure that your community feels heard.
You know, I'd like to, I'd like to add to that. I think that we're in a unique position. I think that all of us up here are well endowed in our communities, they feel comfortable reaching out to us at all hours of the night or day, whatever it may take. And same with the, with the city manager's office, Adam gets lots of phone calls and emails on a regular basis. We do these True North surveys on a regular basis as well, we get pretty good high marks. In fact, I was at one of the meetings, I think, that you were at and with, with myself and we had talked about satisfaction in the community, what the, what the numbers came back and I had put out there, we had like over a 90% approval rate for the city council. Someone in the, in the audience says, oh, that, that, sure, that's Glendora, you know, and because we're kind of unique. But we do a pretty good job and we, I think we beat ourselves up a lot on that communication issue. We're constantly pounding on staff to do a better job with communication, but the problem is, is we don't know how to reach out there. You've got so many different platforms out there and not everyone uses the same platform. I mean, I have probably every app on my phone and everyone uses it differently. And so it's, it's a frustration point for us. How do we get the information up? When we have, we joke about how many people watch our council meetings, oh, it's maybe three this time, you know, the, and from two. And, you know, how do we get out there and, and let people know what we are doing so we can have some feedback? And I know that the mayor, Mayor Potem, had a, a meeting out here, some property they were going to sell and they had a great turnout and everything of that nature, so they quelled some of the rumors and things of that nature moving forward. But we're not always going to have these community meetings and outreach. So any suggestions on a good way for communication that we may not, might not be doing right now?
I just, I just have a request along those lines. This goes to the mayor's comment earlier about protecting private property rights. If you're going to change the zoning on any private property, I highly recommend that you send a letter to that property owner. I went through this in Rentschukamunga recently where they, the city changed the zoning on one of the properties that we worked on and never contacted the, the shopping center owner. And when we confronted them about this, because the ownership was, was like, they couldn't believe they missed the letter, that they missed the notice. And when we were on a call, they finally said, well, we never sent you one, but we did have a community meeting and we did put it on our social media and we did put it on our website, but nobody who's in the, who's in the private sector, who's owns, you know, one property out in a given community, they don't go on those places. And so I just would, to your comment about protecting private property rights, a simple letter so at least you know that you've put them on notice, that the zoning on their property might change would, would be very valuable. Other than that, I'm sure you, it sounds like you guys are doing an awful lot.
But that's a really great example of the normal things that, you know, government would be doing to be transparent and sharing information doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to reach everyone. I mean, when you, especially when we're hearing more now in the environment about inclusive economic development, the folks that communities are trying to reach in order to help them better their economic standing and also their livelihoods, those people are busy working or maybe they're entrepreneurs that are busy running their, their business, they're not going to come to your public meeting, they're not going to go to your website, they might not even know to go to your website. So that's where you have to get really creative in your outreach. And I'm not sure, I should have looked at this, the demographic makeup of your community, but I know some of it's being done through community-based organizations outreach in terms of sharing that kind of messaging with communities, whether it's through churches or other groups that serve populations that normally just would not engage in this. Because I know, growing up, my parents never would have watched a city council meeting or gone to it. But there's a lot of stuff happening and it's really the only way that you can find out what's happening in your community. So you have to get creative. And part of that, I would imagine, comes out during your visioning process as you're thinking about how to get input, like how do we get those people that aren't going to come to us? You have to be creative, you'll find it.
Can I ask one other thing? Well, no, I shouldn't say that. In, in the staff report, there are four areas from a medical standpoint that we are growing. Building A is going to be a two, two-story building, Building B is going to be a three, three-story building. We have another medical building going down on Route 66 and, and I actually think that the building that Easter Seals is doing is, is a quasi-medical building. So my question is, is this planned or are developers seeing us as a rich in place to, to go? And I hark back to the conversation that Eric and I were having about some of the data that, that, you know, he put, put up and really the growth area for jobs is a lot related to medical stuff. So with all of this medical stuff happening, is it a planned, are we just lucky, or should we pause a moment and take a look at this and say, maybe we need to really think about doing more and using some of the space that we've identified to do more? Or am I just totally like saturated with sugar from the cookie that I ate? Which could be true. But I just, I mean, it just was so obvious that medical is just like popping up.
So I think this is actually a great topic and I know Mois Sessel and he'll talk a little, a little bit, but we are an aging population, median income per household anywhere over 100, 140, i- is a lot of money in comparison as you move inland. Working in cities in the inland area, they would absolutely kill for additional medical and underserved communities, so on, so speak, meaning there's just not enough doctors and nurses and other medical personnel to work in those areas. We live in a community where the average prices for housing is more expensive and therefore typically it is higher earning jobs which occur in the medical field that can pay for some of those, those houses, but we do allow for quite a bit of medical use in our community. Personally, I think the more medical uses, if you do it wisely, are really important. There are high wage earners that have young children that would take advantage of our grade schools. Mois Sessel, I know you were going to comment on that a little bit.
Yeah, and I'm actually going to take from what Eric and Gerbaks have mentioned previously. So we, we know we have a pretty good healthcare cluster of businesses in our community and those are kind of the growth areas as we mentioned. So to leverage that from an economic development perspective, clearly we're not relying on sales tax for medical uses. But where we can invest a lot of our time and effort is in reaching out to Citrus and APU, connecting them to those medical office users and say, all right, what are your growth plans? How much, how many more jobs are you going to be create, creating? Are the programs at Citrus College actually creating the skillsets that we need to employ those, those, to, to, to have those employees here in our community? You can even stretch it down further, down to the high school and create a pathway through the classes being offered at Glendora High School to Citrus College or APU or even Laverne to make sure that we've got that, that cluster supported for our community. There, it's not a happenstance that they're popping up. We are an older community as, as Adam mentioned, I think the last time I checked, our median age was 44, which is about 10 years higher than the average, particularly when you go eastward where it trends on the low 30s. So the medical community is responding to the fact that we have an aging population in town. Now we need to create the jobs or, or the employees with the skillsets to fill the jobs for the future so that we create that economic opportunity for them. And we're specifically addressing our needs both from an educational perspective, but also just the practical day-to-day living for our residents. So it's all part of one ecosystem that we can play a much more active role in making sure that we're connecting people, connecting the dots and putting ourselves in a position to be able to have that conversation with developers or, or, you know, future retailers that, you know, we need space, this is where we see that growth opportunity, let's work together to see if we can make that happen.
Maybe some of that workforce housing as a piece of that, because not all those people are going to be the.
That's correct.
Big bucks, million dollar house doctors.
That's correct.
You're going to have some of the other employees that need the workforce.
Absolutely.
Just one note on that, is that a conversation with the hospitals and understanding their needs and the growth is really important, but there's a little weird twist to it because those same kind of people would be annoyed at the city bringing competitors. And the medical industry is really fickle and hard to understand what are, who's collaborating and who's a competitor. And I mean, from a city standpoint, you should want all of it, right? I mean, but it's just reaching out, I just, I've, from experience, got burned on that a couple of times and it's, it's worth noting, so.
I think that's going to wrap up the panel discussion portion of the day. Thank you, Brad, Gerbaks and Eric, for your insight, there was some really good conversation there. And I think if there are any questions, you could probably save them for Jeff's conversation around economic development success and what that looks like. And I think Jeff and Eric will go ahead and speak to that.
We should probably give you guys a couple.
Mayor, is there any last questions of the council that you guys are burning to ask before we do our last portion, which you're going to give staff some more direction here?
It is, it's actually from the corner of Valencia and Foothill on the south side of the street, it's the second property to the east. Yeah, east, between Grand and Valencia on the south side.
Single-story office building.
Correct.
Yeah, correct.
They're going to demolish the building and they're going to build new.
Brad and Gerbaks, thank you again for coming very, very much, we appreciate it.
The last leg?
Rounding third.
Jeff, you're going to take us home.
Okay. So, so I know you, the council, it's great that we've been able to be here today and actually get a lot of information. The council's asked a lot of good questions. Staff's been taking notes on the things we're getting back from council and I kind of want to return this to, the reason we were here in the first place to do this is that the council did set a strategic plan goal to have this meeting as one of the initial things that we were doing with respect to achieving our economic development. initial things that we were doing with respect to achieving our economic development objectives. And I just kind of want to, kind of re, I want to restate them and the last thing we want to do is to get some comment and direction from the council. So as we proceed forward on some of these strategic goals, we have direct feedback up from the council pursuant to this workshop, because I think that's what the reason for this was for, because number one was to host a modern, host a workshop on modern economic development practices. Our other, one of our other tasks is to create an incentive package for identified industry clusters, to identify leakage opportunities, which we've done a little bit here, to think about rebranding and marketing of the city, to evaluate staffing needs based on the priorities that we set, to identify changes necessary in our specific plans and possibly other zoning, and to identify private property owners who want to work with the city. And so as we go from this meeting, so that's a lot of tasks, I think also updating the economic action plan is probably one of the next things we'll be working on. And so kind of your, kind of final feedback, I guess maybe I'm asking each of you again, and maybe your answer would be different from this morning, how would each of you identify or how would you describe a successful economic development plan?
Okay, well, let's go backwards, start with David.
I guess the successful one is if we built it, did they come? That's vague, I'm sorry. And we talked about jobs and daytime traffic seems to be a strong measure, that criteria for people to build. I'm concerned about creating jobs and we've talked greatly about the healthcare business and that makes sense and those jobs are probably the easiest to create, not time-wise, but to identify and create. We've seen California has seen a lot of companies exodus the state, go elsewhere to other regions of the country, only to discover the labor pool, the skilled talent pool does not exist where they were going. And I'd hope that we don't create that and that we have, okay, here's a business, robotics is keen, so we have 200 jobs being done by one gadget. That's not a gain to us, because the gadget doesn't go out to lunch. But, no, do we have that labor pool? So if we create, if we invite an industry to come to town in a small footprint, we can offer it and it brings jobs, would they hire the people here? I hope to think that Glendora has a little greater talent pool than many areas of the country might, so we're probably okay there, but we may not be. Need to look at, when we invite industry, they claim that they're going to bring jobs, well, did they really bring them? Kind of that, the measure that you said, look down the road and what's that, hold their feet to the fire type criteria, did they really bring and produce what they suggested? I guess the job number is important, the daytime traffic is important. And can we offer those jobs to the residents here? But then we've also shared with an aging population, do I need to go back to work? Maybe, do I want to? No. So will the population that's here be interested in those jobs? We've all agreed that our children that want the jobs probably can't afford to live here. So, yeah, we've now created a commuter environment, which may not be bad. I guess some of those things, I always, I was intrigued by the 3% vacancy number that it seemed so low. You don't realize, I ask them all the time in the mixed-use opportunities, what percentage of that retail or business portion is actually utilized? They always come back with high numbers, which surprises me, but you track that, you share that, so that's encouraging, but you, that build mixed use, probably not our, shouldn't be our first focus. I think a measure is, we need some business, we need to attract some kind of retail business because sales tax is good. Be able to balance out the growth with some extra income.
Thank you, Gary. I think we have to put this a little bit in context as well. We have a declining population, how quickly do we want to replenish that? If we build, it's going to take some time to do so. So then we have the other option of annexation, which we have to discuss economics, if that's going to work out or not. We did our measure E and our Calpers realignment bonds. Had we not done that, our future would have looked completely different. We have a different conversation we have right now. So we have to define what's the measure of success. Is it economics? Because we're doing fairly well economically. Is it then blighted areas that we want to fix, which is probably the measurement that we might want to go after of the blighted areas is maybe, maybe one or two item. And we also have, the situation is brought up about the homes that we have that only have maybe one or two people in because the family's grown and gone and now they have a 2,000 to 3,000 square foot home with two people in it. So we had a discussion offline earlier about, we were talking about building homes, what kind of homes? Well, do we want new family homes or do we want to have a smaller footprint of home to move some of these folks that still want to be in Glendora into a nice atmosphere that frees up those homes up in the hills or the single-family areas? Then you can move a family into it and then you replenish the population that way. Maybe that's a solution, because then that feeds into retail business to backfill what we have since we don't have much of a, of a vacancy. And that's a good, a good way to go, to go forward quickly. We also have, as I mentioned early on, we have the two universities, two schools here that can help us partner with different businesses. I know that I've been to different businesses all over the, all over the world where they would partner and they would have what we call garage doors, what they would have maybe about 12 garage doors all facing each other and they invite people from the community that wants to have an entrepreneurial presence and they all help each other. And then that business also dedicates not only the space, but a little bit of resources to help these folks go and grow, because we're not going to necessarily get, we're not going to get companies from other states, they're not coming here. So we have to build here, people are now, how I should say indoctrinated to how California has to work and then they're going to probably stay here under the circumstances. And, and, you know, it's a far stretch for us to be able to change the legislation. Up in Sacramento, we try to do that every day, but that's a long haul, long stretch and I, you know, I already have gray hair now. So we have to work with the tools that we have. Just to reiterate, I think that, again, we would have had a different conversation several years ago had we not implemented some of these changes. But we have to look about repurposing what we have and not necessarily bringing in the fresh bodies with building new homes, but reallocating for the elderly folks to have something to stay here because this is their home and free up the big homes that they have and work with the, the schools and the colleges to help with the entrepreneurial. I think that we can maybe find some of that, I mean, some of their enterprise way, there might be some room there, particularly you've got the union with the elevator school there, they're not always there. Perhaps maybe we can go talk to those folks and see if they have some space they want to dedicate, they probably do, they probably have a program just for that. Maybe we can help facilitate that. And then also, well, lastly is, we have a micro and a macro communication issue. I like some of the talks that we had here with Brad about how they would get into communities and they would get our, our, Eric, you've mentioned this as well, that we can get together with different entities in a certain region and talk to, what can you do with your property? Can you guys want to talk, what can we do to help fix the situation or do you know there's more value here if X, Y, and Z is done? And maybe we can facilitate some lot mergers or the selling of some of the property. Again, I brought up the situation where a lot of these folks, this is their retirement and they're counting on that. How do we get them past some of these issues that they have in their life so that we can repurpose these? I don't want to take a heavy hand, I like the property rights situation, but by the same token, we need to, to fix some of these blighted areas. So we have to go hand-in-hand and bring resources to these folks to help them make that decision to move on and to repurpose those properties into something that's viable now. And, and how we communicate this, I'm still at a loss. I think the best way is us up here with our social media accounts, walking the streets as it were, knocking on doors, that was really good. I know that when we did the, we had COVID, I was the mayor and I, we had to reinvent our communication. Joe and I walked to the, almost the entire city, handing masks out, talking to people. That was, I thought was very, very valuable, although a lot of people didn't, were afraid when we walked in the door, like, we're here from the city, we're here to help, not. And, but I think things of that nature, it's going to get down to that, to communicate. People are apathetic, they, they're not going to listen to any of this stuff unless we do this in a different manner. And we are a small hometown and I think that if we take that approach of a small hometown and knocking on doors as it were, sending personalized letters, I think that would help a lot, because we've tried so much, so hard on the communication issue, we have not found that, that magic bullet to make this happen. So I've given you an awful lot, I think, in my, my thoughts and opinions, but we have to figure out the metrics of what success, and I think the success is going to be the blighted areas that we've already identified, how do we correct that? And how do we transition folks that have only two people in a home into a smaller space to open that up for a family to move into that home? That's probably the quicker way. I know we're talking about San Jose and about, you know, single-family homes, this, that and the other, but maybe we need to rethink that. And, you know, we had a Dawson facility over, on Dawson for the elderly folks, maybe not to that degree, but think about something of that nature, because it always came, comes up that we only have a small amount of folks in these big homes and it's kind of a waste of space.
Mayor.
Thank you, Mike. Karen?
Thank you. And I guess again, the question would be, what do we want to use as the metrics? Is it the optics of driving around and not seeing vacant buildings? Or is it based on some other number and measurement? So I guess that would depend what we're trying to do as the end game. But I think just trying to find that balance, to have housing that meets a variety of needs and a variety of workers and trying to still, even though, you know, today, medical may be the big thing, trying to always look at the bigger picture. There was a time when we said, oh yeah, you know, pharmacies are it, because we have this older population and we had a pharmacy on every corner and now a lot of those pharmacies have closed. And then we said, oh yeah, pizza's big and then, you know, all the pizza places and then some of those started going out. So I guess just looking at the bigger picture so that we don't go down one rabbit hole and then in five years say, oh, medical's gone automated and now all these empty buildings. You know, and we are an aging population, so some of the services those people need, you know, more of the, for lack of a better way to describe it, the visiting angel type services, and not just medical, but what are other services? You know, people to go do the nails and the hair of the people in their home if they can't physically get there, whatever it is. So just trying to always look at the bigger picture. And if it's using daytime population numbers, do we have a number that we consider a success? You know, a vacancy number that's a success? But just trying to maintain that balance and look at the bigger picture. I loved Eric's, you know, different description of the different sites and I thought, not quite that fabulous historic thing, but, you know, like a Monopoly game where we have all those sites laid out and say, okay, looking at all of this, this would be good over here because it fits in with that and this would be good and looking at it from that aerial view of those vacancies and how best they complement other areas near them, so.
Thank you, Mayor. I have seven things and they're not going to take as long as, as you're like wincing, because I know when the pastor says, well, I have a seven-point sermon, we're there for a long time.
Not this pastor?
No, I know, not you. First of all, I think we need to listen to what our people have said and I think we're actually doing that. The first thing is Adam has pointed, is said is unhoused and we've taken very good steps to look at that. The second thing they talked about was dining, shopping, I think we need to think about that. Next one, I really can't think of anything. Third one, I mean, fourth one, safety, I think we all know that, I think we're in pretty good hands there. Sixth one, improve streets and roads. And I think that we are doing that. And I do think that that is part of having a, a feeling that economic recovery and economic attraction is here. If you drive in and you're not rattled in your car by the crappy streets and you don't see a bunch of leaks. So I think my first point is listen and I think we're, we are, you know, doing that, but I think we need to stick to what the people have said and let that help us be a guide. Second of all, I do think that housing is a really important thing, all kinds of it. And I support that and I think we are doing strides there to do that. I think that Valerie said, we have close to 100 new homes being built in one shape or, you know, kind, and I think that that is a really good thing. Thirdly, I do think that we need to look at some blighted areas. Yesterday, as I said, my wife and I took kind of a roving tour and man, there's some areas that just really need some help. And whether the city gets in there and helps them, whether churches get in there and helps them, whether service clubs get in and help them, but we need to take a really serious look at some of the blighted areas. And they're not huge areas, but one scab leads to another scab to another scab and it adds up. And I think that that, that that just needs to be looked at. Fourthly, I think we need a very intentional plan to have a chat with owners that, for whatever the reason, have not moved. Kitchen shop is one of those, that has been a vacant place for two or three years. I think he or she, whoever owns that, has every right not to rent it, that's their right. But I think that it's important that we have, we sit down and talk with them. So what can we help you with? What can we do? And I think that there's some areas that are in town that, you know, need that. Fifthly, yes, all raise hands, all get up, do some jumping jacks. Apparently, yeah, yeah. Well, I have enough light here to continue on. Ah, there it is, I see. Has been said that I think that there's places that we can partnership with. I know I've talked a lot about the medical world, but Citrus and APU and ULV, Claremont Schools, they're not that far. The Claremont School is a 12-minute drive from, from here. And ULV and APU. And I think that we need to be intentional, once again, about going out and listening to them, talking with them and seeing where the graduates are, you know, going and see if we can help them there. And I think my last point is, we need an intentional plan to fill some of the gaps. We're working on those. The property on Grand, the property on 66, some of the property as Eric has showed us on Arrow. We need by next year to have an intentional plan, next year at this time, not like next year like 1-1, but we need some intentional plans. And maybe that means going out and engaging a, you know, a developer who has the contacts and bring them alongside maybe some of our folks that own it but don't have the contacts and couple with them and say, hey, we, we need help here. So those are my thoughts and I think that's, oh. So those are my thoughts, and I think that's, oh, the last thought. And I, yeah, I'm going to say it. I, I think we need to continue to rethink the bid. And either reinvent the current bid, reinvent the current bid with expanding the bid, reinvent the current bid with the help of Chamber. We, we need to look at that. And we, and I know, and I know that we are, I'm not saying that we aren't. But I think that that needs to be a definite plan, a box that needs to be checked, and something that we, that we continue to look at. So with that, I'm done. Pretty quick for seven points, huh? And now the offering plate's going to be passed and...
Well, you know, you were asking about measuring success. And when we take a look at everything we have going on right now, I, I think we're seeing success. There's a lot of stuff happening. I knew all of these things were happening. We have not actually sat down and looked at them all together before. Karen's idea of putting together some sort of a model or something that could be, could be done. I, I'm sitting here, as you mentioned that a little while ago. I'm thinking to myself, we have ways of creating something online that might be interactive. We all know the property down on Grand and Baseline. They have been asking us about a hotel, and there's been conversations. We've done a hotel study. And it's, you know, we could definitely support a hotel here in town, but it needs to be a five-story hotel. So if we need to go to that, that is actually a decent site. Having the ability to have that communication with residents, I think, could be very important. But as far as measuring the success, I looked at, I appreciate all the information on, on the, the job skills that we have in town. But the information about we're an exporter, that people are leaving town to, to go to their jobs. Maybe one of the things that we could, and I don't know how you would get this information, but it would really be interesting to take a look at our, our job skills that we have here in the community and see what the largest percentage of those that are leaving town are. And maybe that could be the targets that we need to look for of trying to get businesses to come into town. Because having that kind of information is really important. The idea of getting the property owners together, I think Valerie, you have worked on this for years, trying to make sure that we have all that information, and I think we have a lot of it. But the idea of having a quarterly breakfast or something to get people together to get them talking to each other, I, I think is a great idea, and that's a measure of success, whether we resolve anything or not. But at least we've taken the step to do what needs to be done to get people to, to look at these, these various things. And then the other idea that I really hadn't thought about, but it's, it's factual. The properties that have been sitting vacant for a long time, or have been underutilized for a long time, are there for a reason. There's a reason that the Tuesday Morning Shopping Center sat there for so long, and the, the Mayflower Center has sat there for so long. We, we sort of know what those reasons are. But I don't think we've ever really addressed, okay, what can we do to overcome those, and then have that conversation. I think, you know, we know that we could solve anybody's problem by creating high-density housing. Rezone everything to high-density housing, stuff would get built immediately. But that's not healthy for the community, and, and it's not what our residents are looking for. So trying to, trying to put that information together would be a really good sign of success for us to start having the conversation for the next general plan for, for the city. Because as we, as we move forward with that project, we're all looking back at what was done 20 years ago. And they were great ideas at the time, but it needs to be relooked at. And how do we address that with our currently mandate from the state with our housing element? Because we've pretty much now, and some decisions by the state, some by us locally, that housing can go just about any place in town. So what can we do as we move forward with, with a new general plan? Try to make sure we don't disrupt what we've already done, but with a plan to move forward with the city, or with, you know, keeping a good balanced city. So I think collecting the information and trying to put a plan together to start this communication as to how we can do some of the things we've been talking about, would be a good measure of success. I think the long-term measure of success is something we're, we're never really going to see because we don't know what that's going to look like, but, but we need to start those communications as, as quickly as possible.
In order to come to the table, and I, I don't know if any of the council members touched on it individually. One of the tasks that we have for this is to talk about incentives, and not just on the residential side, but the commercial side. Because oftentimes cities contact people, and I think you've all heard me say, usually a person's first interaction with the city is a negative one. They got a ticket, they have to pay a fee. They have to pull permits to run plumbing on one of the businesses that was just mentioned. So if we're going to ask people come, to come to the table and have conversations, oftentimes they want to know what's in it for them. And so while incentives are a double-edged sword, as we heard earlier, do you want us to look at incentives in terms of residential, commercial, industrial density? If families are going to get together and sell property, and we're going to make peace among family members, which I think, as Eric mentioned, is much more difficult than it sounds. What tools does the council want to provide staff to make that happen? Because calling people together is one thing, offering them a potential solution is another. Is there any willingness for staff to look at that, or just, just some general ideas and thoughts?
Does it involve money, or does it involve in-kind time for planning or?
Well, inevitably, it all is money.
It's all money, but as far as, let's say, hey, what can we do with this? What will, what planning?
If you want someone to sell your property, there's got to be a financial incentive in there for them. Whether it's rezoning, or bonuses, or what have you, but staff time included. I mean, we can provide expedited review, we can do some of those other things. We're just talking about the general idea of incentives. Is that something you want us to look at?
Yes, for services, I think that's appropriate, for as far as handing dollars out, a check. I, I don't think the residents would be too kind with that.
What about rezoning? Ability to build by reducing parking restrictions for commercial?
That would still have to come back to the council, correct?
Well, I mean, we would, y- yes, we're, we're just trying to get an idea if council's interested in, in having that discussion.
Absolutely.
Yes, definitely. But I think one of the things is, we don't know what is going to be requested. Brad made the comment, and, and something that I, I've understood as well, is that you've got two parcels side by side that are, have very little value individually, but together they're quite valuable. Getting that information out to people, or finding a way to be able to show that to property owners, I think would be very valuable, and that doesn't cost us anything, except for making sure that we have the knowledge. Having the ability to be able to show people what could be done if you were to group some properties together. So there's different incentives that we could put together that really wouldn't cost us anything. But as far as other incentives, incentives, I think anything that would make sense. Because it's like any other business, if you go into something, sales tax sharing, things like that. It's, it's one of those things that people will talk about. I, I get a kick out of the public when they talk about certain businesses getting a tax break. And it's like, well, they didn't really get a tax break, because if they didn't build here, we would bring in no taxes. So we've reduced their taxes, and they built here, so now we're getting something. So it's identifying those opportunities, I, I think are important. And then making sure that, that the public understands those types, it's no different than investing in a business.
It sounds like the council wanted, just, just to make sure, on the incentives though, it wouldn't be in general. You would want us to work with the council to identify those target market areas that we want. And those are where the incentives come into play, whether it's eventful type of spaces, gather, what, whatever those parameters are essentially, but it's not just a free-for-all. There would be a targeted, data-driven look at the type of businesses we want to bring in, and be willing to have a spectrum of options for them to incentivize them coming to Glendora. Is that fair assumption?
I think it varies, you know, there'd be different things for retail than there would be in housing, you know.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I think that, that's also...
As Michael mentioned earlier, one of the, one of the things that people are dealing with is, we do have a number of property owners in town that have, they bought the property for, you know, commercial property for $64,000 back in 1972. Okay, and they're collecting rent off of that. And that's really easy income when you're 75 years old and you have this check coming in every month. The idea of us having the ability to work with property owners and try to find ways to fix this for them, so that they could move on. If there are, you know, any types of legal ways that we could help to make sure that people understood that there were opportunities, that we can do this without you having to pay a, a lot of capital gains taxes. You still are going to be able to get your income on a regular basis, and you're, you're going to be able to move on from, from having this property. So there's a lot of different things that I think are, are available, and I think they're all open. But to try to pin down and say, we can do A, B, C, and D, I, I just don't think that's possible.
We did talk a little bit about leakage, and we also talked, Eric talked a little bit about, you know, priority sites. And those sites that he identified were locations that staff is sort of focused on from an economic development perspective. Meaning that those are the property owners we're probably most often in touch with, you know, relative to others because of the size of the sites and, and potential. Are there, are there any other particular, say, areas of the city that are equally as important, or of greater importance, or of the highest importance? In terms of, I mean, we talked a lot about, Michael and others have talked about blighted, you know, areas. I'm, you know, really, it's the areas we're focusing on with that are, are east, are major east-west corridors. You know, most of the city's built out with single-family homes, which are mostly nice neighborhoods. So we're, we're focused on Route 66 and Arrow Highway. And then probably the area around the Gold Line.
Yeah, I, I think you're right. And a couple of things, you know, sort of leakage. We had businesses choose to close, or we have fear that some big boxes might be selecting our locations to reduce. Difficult to go back and ask Vons, hey, why did you close the Arrow Highway store? We can all conjecture, and it's not too hard to do. We can look at the, the neighboring pharmacy next to it and say, wow, we're lucky it's still here because the attraction to it is tough. So there's things I think we can look at if we identify sites, say, why isn't this a favorable location? Well, there's some obvious things that may be there, maybe from the center of the line of street in. Look at it and says, I wouldn't stop there. I don't feel comfortable. It's not safe. Why would a business want to have a newer effort there? So I think we can attack some of those things, and we're working on that. I think we can go after some of those unsavory examples and try to fix those, to make that a desirable site once again. Arrow Highway is a tough one. That's our biggest opportunities, as one of those east-west corridors you identify. We share that street with a couple of municipalities. As you work east, there's some closures, okay? Let's find out why those businesses left. Might be a common thing. It might be the aesthetics, the neighboring, street traffic they're having to deal with. Those, I think, are fixable. Might have to ask.
I think a, a couple of things, trying to target some of those major things that people are going elsewhere for. And seeing if any of those would be a good fit, any of those vacancies. But also in that bigger picture scene. For instance, if we're going to build housing in Arrow Highway, trying to also get a grocery store so that it's not a food desert. You know, trying to look at it that way. If we're going to do X, then Y is going to be important as well. So maybe those targeted things as well.
I think that, that we have our targeted areas. But then we also send a general letter out to all these, all the different folks in town saying, listen, we're going to contemplate and on bringing to bear all these extra services to help regenerate your property. Are you interested? Please contact us. But we've already have our list that we're already working with and on. But put it out there as an opportunity for those other folks that we've not identified, that they may have that opportunity to be part of an incentive program that the city is going to put together, and put them on a list. So that we, you have the outreach for that, but we're only going to concentrate on, you know, the ones that we're going to, high priority at the moment. And secondly is, we do have a situation, no one's talked about, we've talked around it, about crime. Quite frankly, the, from what I was told, quite a long time ago, Vons left because of crime. They, from the apartments across the street from it, they were, they just could not stay in business. They were getting ripped off on a regular basis. But that's only so much we can do from our PD standpoint. So we have to address the elephant in the room with that situation. What is going to fit there, and what is not going to fit there because of the state laws? So it's something we have to look at. If there's something we can go around to fix it somehow, or address it somehow. And if that's going to be something we can't address, what do we put there that's going to be kind of crime-proof or crime avoidance?
The only thing that I would add is two things. One, going back to what the people have said. They want some more enhanced places to go to eat, to find, find dining. They don't necessarily want more drive-throughs. The leakages on number two, I, I don't know that I would give a lot of time to increasing liquor stores or places to get gas. I think we have enough of those. But I was shocked by the sporting goods stores. We only have really maybe two in town, the Big Five. And then at, you know, at Walmart, you can buy sporting goods stuff, but with as many...
Big Five is in San Dimas.
Huh? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, that's true.
Your shop is in San Dimas.
So we don't even have one, except for Walmart. But with as many kids that are involved with sports of all kinds, you know, I guess everybody just goes down the dics. But there are some, some areas that are on that slide that Eric gave us, which I am thankful for, that I think we should put some effort to, but those would be my two points. Thanks.
I think those cover the major areas that I wanted to. Eric, did you have anything else that you wanted to throw in for the good of the order? Should I let the council say a few words?
Well, again, thank you for including me in the discussion. Yeah, it's, it's a challenge. I think Glendora is in a reasonably good spot. I mean, luckily, we're talking about kind of the, the corners to be improved, rather than some structural huge challenge. So I, I guess that's, that's off to our community. But improving the, the things that are on our list are, you know, it just takes consistent work and relationship building. Being a bit more kind of assertive on what an opportunity might present, you know, whatever presents itself, and to kind of do it with full diligence. But anyway, I, I think the sites, there are probably two or three other sites that probably come to mind other than the ones that we showed, but they all have their own challenges for different reasons. But I only learned after putting those up that the fragmented ownership is very consistent with some of those bigger sites. Not all of them, but that, again, there's a reason why they just haven't moved, because of that big challenge. And no matter what the city does, half of them are just... And, um, I think no matter what the city does, half of them are just going to be the same. But we should at least try with all of them and, and see where we get.
Well, I, we right now, I can think of, um, we have three of those sites that we have a lot of interest in doing something with them. And we have a pretty good idea what we would need to do in order to make things move forward. That would be the Mayflower site, the Tuesday morning site and old Andy's Auto site. I don't know if, if, you know, census, but to concentrate on those three projects because those would be huge steps to move forward. Because there, there are three that have been, you know, top of the list for a long time. And maybe what we need to do, we need to start some engagement with the community because we have shared what we think would be acceptable there. The property owners have shared what they want to do there. And maybe we need to engage the community and try to figure out what would be acceptable to the community. Because maybe the community would be more open to things than we realize. So looking at the fact that in, in my old sales lingo, we have three hot prospects. Maybe we need to concentrate on those and try to figure out if, if there's something that can be done there or if we're going to continue beating our head against the wall with those three sites.
I think two of those sites, we're going to get an application that will become a public conversation here in the very near future. If we haven't already received those. I think the Mayflower site, we've yet to receive any sort of concrete ideas. And so that one, if we're going to have a public conversation to, I think the other two are going to lodge, are just going to naturally come up here soon for us. That one, a little more difficult and, you know, obviously we've been in contact with that owner on, on a number of occasions more than I have fingers and toes. What type of public communication is this body looking for in that area? What, what does, to help us, what does that look like for you? What, what does that public involvement look like for you?
Well, for example, we know the Tuesday morning site, he has been contemplating wanting five, is it five fast food places there? Okay, but, um, we, we haven't really engaged the public as to what their thought process is on that. We.
That's a difficult, and I think that's part of the difficult process because there's a planning commission and a city council that gets to make that call. And sometimes if a city council goes out of their way, it makes it look like, why do you have a planning commission? So it's, that's one of those tricky ones and I, I don't disagree. So that's why we're kind of asking the questions is, what is that pub, so if the public can, what does that engagement look like? Does it start at planning commission and then they get at, and, and that's where it starts? And then there's, the council directs them to do some public information gathering? Or is this more of a premeditate, not even premeditated, a, some pre-outreach? Because part of the challenge and Jeff can talk about difficult to have conversations as a council before something comes to its body that you're going to have to vote on. That, that becomes a very difficult situation for us. Jeff, you will kind of talk about sort of how public outreach could be done in those areas?
Yeah, I, I, so I, I understand what you're, what you're getting at because the community always has an interest in what goes at various locations in the city. So now I'm going to talk a little bit like I'm an attorney, right? So, you know, and the property rights issue. You know, the owners of those properties have a right, I think, and an expectation that the city, if they submit an application to us, would at the very least abide by its current zoning rules. That it wouldn't, um, you know, put a, an application that was otherwise, let's say, compliant with the underlying zoning out for, out for a vote of public opinion. That, you know, for, and I think the Tuesday morning, my understanding is that they are going to submit an application that is a commercial development of some type, including a couple of drive-throughs. And that is allowed within the current zoning. On the other hand, you have other properties, possibly the Andy's Auto site, where you could have an owner, um, proposing, you know, a, uh, an, a development that not is compliant with the current zoning. And in that case, I think there is an opportunity, what we've done in the past is when a applicant, uh, property owner wants to do something that isn't compliant with the current zoning, we, we've invited to have public workshops, you know, with the planning commission and invite community input. I think that, uh, the developer may shy away from that type of public engagement because for, as Brad and others indicated earlier, that creates uncertainty in the process. Again, if you're, so it's a, it's sort of a tricky thing, you know, when you're talking about land use decisions. You know, asking somebody who lives in a single-family home, a couple of miles away from it, what they think. You know, where you have an investor who wants to put in, I think it's probably, in my opinion, you know, more appropriate. If you want to have community discussions on where we should go, other than talking about individual sites, we should be thinking strategically about some of these areas. And what I mean by that is if you sort of closed your eyes and you imagine a time machine spinning forward 50 years, what would you hope that Route 66 looks like? What would you hope that the area around the gold line looks like? And have, and that type of long-range visioning of the, of, is what I think is the best place to get that kind of broad public engagement on and have, like we've done in the past, have, um, you know, charrettes and workshops and, you know, develop consensus around those things and then bring it forward to the commission at the council, something that they can, you know, bring their arms, wrap their arms around. And I think we've done that, you know, we did that with Arrow Highway. We had the Arrow Highway Committee that the council appointed. And there was a group of people, maybe there's a different way to do that, but we had a committee that came up with the ideas that eventually became the Arrow Highway specific plan. Likewise, even going back 20 years, we did the same thing with the Route 66 specific plan. Maybe it's time to do that type of broad strategic visioning again around the general plan and around these, these corridors and around the gold line station. I think that is probably a better way to approach the public outreach than on individual sites and messing around with individual property owners in that way.
Can I just add quickly to the theme of your comment? So when I first started my profession, I was working for an architect and my job was to submit plans to a city. And I got really frustrated by the fact that the city was telling us how to design everything. And later I worked for a city, uh, in economic development and I would facilitate working with businesses. And still we had a, um, historic preservation commission, design commission that were getting super finicky on design and it used to drive me nuts. But I, I say that in the context of now I've come to appreciate the fact a bit more that, that developers and, um, various businesses are forced to consider improvements that have a timeline more consistent with the, their loan, with kind of the quick horizon or 30-year horizon potentially on a mortgage for something. They're looking at, um, improvements that only go to meet their more immediate need. And that the city has more of an obligation to make sure that improvements go in and look like they're part of the city for at least 80, 100 years. And I only comment on that because it is this kind of natural tension between the, the property rights issue and trying to get things done. But the kind of challenge that cities have in making sure that, um, it is, the improvements are appreciated by the community. And a result, kind of it shows that there's a long-term commitment by, you know, the investor and business to that they really care for the city. So that being, I say that, that details in design haven't really been mentioned at all. But just not to forget it because it is something that, um, it, from my humble opinion, it, it does really matter, that extra step, it, because the community cares about it. The developers initially don't want to deal with it, but they will come to respect it because they know that their neighbors will be held to the same standard. And it's just a component of economic development. And the fact that uniqueness of the community in Glendora, instead of it's not being the same every three to seven miles, that the Glendora improvement has a bit more of a character that we can be proud of. So it's just one of those things that doesn't get pulled into the cycle of economic development. But just because it hasn't been mentioned yet, I just want to throw it out.
I think it wasn't mentioned because this body has pretty unanimously in the past said, these are standards that work and some that don't work. So design element characters, I think are a known entity that they shall, they shall prevail to a point, so.
And I think today's workshop, that this would give people that higher elevation, that if they really want to know kind of where things are headed, they can look at this, even though it is a lot of material, that I think that would give people some perspective. And then if you did your suggestion of a, uh, you know, zoning in those particular areas, that that would, um, further help get that public dialogue.
I wish we had an audience full of residents here today to, to see and understand what goes into this, the thought process.
I, I think most, and here I, I live in town and I talk to people and I think they sort of view the city process as sort of like, you know, when, uh, you know, as, as an emperor during a Roman gladiator contest and you're, you're like this, does he live or does he die? And I think that's how, that's how your average resident sort of views, I mean, the, the planning and development process. That there's a group of, there's an oligarchy of folks who sit up here and we go like this or this. But, but really it's the, you know, I, I mentioned it earlier, you know, having a, having a vision and, and trying to adhere to that over the long term is really the challenge. You know, whether that be a vision for the area around the gold line station and, and sort of, sort of more broad strokes of, of, of what that is and, and making decisions on, when you have incentives, like how do we encourage over the long term, the types of growth and development that we want to see? And that maybe play out with, you know, regulatory concessions that could play out with, um, you know, uh, financial incentives, extra assistance for certain types of growth and development. But it's sort of more of that, that big picture. And then over time, you know, if those policies are, you know, catch a wave in the market at the right place and the right time and you can push those things, you, you're able to take advantage of that. You know, we can, you know, we can look at, again, and bring back, we've done several mini economic studies to see what's going on in our market. And, you know, they tell us a lot and you try to orient, you try to envision what's going on in the future and try to match your, your regulatory environment to, to, to complement that. It's a little bit of a tricky thing. Um, you know, we've been fairly successful at doing that. I think we've gotten development over the past couple of decades that, um, reflects some of the goals that the community's had for itself over the long run. So that's kind of what you, what you have to do. And then when you get a development that you want, you have incentives in place to accommodate it. You know, if you want, you know, a, an office building or if you want whatever type of commercial development, for example, make sure you have, um, things in your toolbox that you can say, hey, yeah, we will, this is what we will do when you, when you show up.
It doesn't matter until it matters. You know, when it's in your backyard or your front yard, then it's Gary Boyer, give it the thumbs down. You know, that, that, that expectation. So maybe if folks look at today, they'll see what some of their backyards may be going forward. And maybe it will be a preemptive discussion rather than, no, don't do it. You know, and that might help get that conversation going.
Do you think it would be possible to summarize what we did today into a one-hour presentation that we could have and, uh, stream live to people and, and try to get the community to come and take a look at, at what we're dealing with as we move forward?
Sure.
Hopeful? Yeah. No, I'm, um, cut and paste the video to put it out there? No, I'm thinking about having another meeting, but only like an hour meeting. Invite the public, do a lot of outreach to try to get people here actually streaming live so that people would watch it.
Yeah, I, I think there's an ability to go a little bit broader than today. We talked about just an economic development strategic plan, you know, to sort of get council's input on what economic development looks like to the council. I think we're set forth in the strategic plan, there's lots of things that are going on. You've approved a couple of elements for our general plan. We're going to be having that conversation, the economic. I think we can layer in other things that even gives the public a broader perspective of the development challenges as they go about it. It, it sounds like more of an educational tool. Hey, here's the process that goes about it. Here's why things don't happen overnight. Here are some of the challenges that we run into. I think we can absolutely put something like that together.
Good idea.
Yeah.
Okay, you guys have been quiet over there since you have to do all the work.
I think resource discussion was on the strategic plan, so.
Okay, well, is there anything else you need from us? Any other suggestions, ideas? Come on, we were expecting you to give us answers today.
Was this helpful?
It was extremely helpful.
Do you feel like you had the opportunity to ask every question you wanted to ask? There you go.
And some I will think about as soon as I leave here today.
That's all right.
Really, I'd like to thank our, our guest presenters and the expertise and the candidness of which you brought good information. Thank you.
So sometimes we, um, we've probably not been as clear as we should have to staff. And I guess a question that I would have is, do you guys have a better sense of where we're going? Especially Jeff. We want to unleash you and, uh, not have you, not have you in your, uh, not have you in your, uh, what, you know, what did you say that you had bitten in?
Out of the freezer.
Uh, you know, out of the freezer when, when you gave your update at, uh, the mayor's, the state of the city. So I, I mean, I just want to hope and think that maybe, you know, we've, we've kind of enlightened and been more, more forthright than maybe we have in years past. Any sense of that or?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that the, you know, not just this meeting, but I think the strategic plan and trying to, to at least, you know, adhere to those items helps a lot because we can at least stay on the same page on the discussion. I think that this meeting itself moves us forward in, in achieving some of those goals. And so it gives, we can start working on some of, some of the next things. You know, we're already working on some of those things. So it, it does help.
Joe, you got anything to add or?
Sorry, nothing really new or to add, just that, um, Chamber wants to be a part of it. We're, we're your partner and, you know, calling us and I would like to be more involved in it, so we're ready. Sure. Thank, thank you for the invite.
Okay, do we have anything else? You're good. Well, we are done early, so we will adjourn our meeting at 2:46 PM. Thank you, everybody.